Hello, good evening. We're about to start our, well, we are now starting our budget workshop. Director Roy, I see you're joined by some guests and I appreciate all the department heads and superintendents here.
I'll let you introduce yourself.
Kevin Gonya, Director, Lewiston Public Works.
Erica Kidd, Deputy Director for Utilities, so water, sewer, bit of storm, and electric.
So tonight, we're going to start off with the utilities, LCIP. So everything in yellow is requested, so the CSO separation. So on the slide here, I'm showing an illustration of what a combined sewer system looks like, and I did just the wet because when the dry, it doesn't show like the differences. So during the wet, when it's combined, you can see that the sewer is in with the water. So this project is to actually separate that system. So on the right-hand side, it shows a picture of it being separated and only the water going into the water, the rest going into the treatment plant and being treated before it is sent into the water. Any questions on the CSO separation?
Counselor Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it possible to refer to the page in the LSPI as well? I put my notes there, and I didn't have you, little cheat sheet, to change the notes in case I have a question.
Do you have that page handy, Director Gonya?
Page sixty, I believe is what you're looking at.
Anything further, Counselor Glenn?
Let me get to page sixty, I'll let you know.
We're standing by.
Okay. So my question is, what happens if we don't?
Counselor Glenn, yes, thank you.
What happens if we don't do it?
So right now, the Clean Water Act, we've been working on CSO separation for decades. We actually got our permit, which is a five-year renewal and update, in early 2000. So we are well past our initial fifteen years, and we keep finding areas. So this is specific under, with EPA and DEP, to be able to not have overflows and reach what's called a one-year control storm. So under those federal regulations, we're required to continue to vet these out and not have discharges to the river during wet weather event. Some have said, you know, it's an unfounded mandate, but, you know, at this point, I think Lewiston has taken a path where we've optimized our storage, and we are, you know, so we have, I think, four storage tanks that take up and have that control. There's a storage tank being built at the sewer treatment plant. These are areas that not only are having overflow events, but also contributing to our base flow. So if they're taking groundwater, we're sending that clean groundwater or even clean storm water, we're sending it to the treatment plant before an overflow happens. So we're saving money by doing the separation, as well as being in compliance with our permits.
Okay, my only concern is being a tight budget year and seeing nothing in '27, '28, '29 in this area, and knowing it's not mandated, that it has to be done, is it something we could skip a year as we're trying to trim things down for our constituents?
So the funding source for this is, I believe, storm water and 50 percent sewer. So we do have a rate increase proposed for the storm water account. However, like I said, we're, we don't have the per gallon, but we're, the less we can get out, the more we can get out of the system, the less we're sending it to the treatment plant. So I, we're required to do this and be diligent about it. We'll be cited, if we have a backup, if we have a litmus discharge, then we could be cited for it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And Director Roy, the projects we're talking about tonight, funding will come from either bonding or fund balance, correct?
All of these are bonded.
All of these are bonded.
Unbonded ones are not. Those will be when we go over page thirty-four.
I see, okay. But at no point will any project here increase the tax rate for this year.
This will not increase the tax rate for this year. This is bonded, stuff that will be bonded in two years.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to make that point clear. Thank you. Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. And along those lines, will the bond be paid for by the utilities' customers?
Correct.
Okay, so it won't be, it won't fall to the general fund ever, really?
Correct.
So then my next question is, I see this is for Whipple Street project. Are we just sort of chipping away at this as we, you know, year by year as we can?
If you look at the narrative on page sixty, the part that we need to separate is actually underneath and through CSX rail. So we've been working for several years to actually get this permitted. It's very expensive to keep going back to the table and updating plans, and so we're at the point where this connection is key to actually realizing some separation. So it's why regulatory and time are not something that may be imminent, but it's something that we do continue to work on, and this is an opportunity to, we've had the street in delay for several years, and this is the request for this year to get that area done.
Okay, thanks. And then, as far as citywide, do we have other areas that we'll need to do in future years, and we're just sort of, you know, doing them as we can get to them and as we can fund them?
I can let Jeff Booley, or our city engineer, or Erica chime in on that, but I can tell you that, if you want to come up, I can tell you that we're still doing, we've done video inspection of the collection system. We're working on the storm drain, and we're finding inputs to the sewer system all the time. Jeff in the engineering division with a contractor found some recent ones that are draining bogs. So while we need to put storm drain in so we don't have flooding in people's backyards and streets, getting it out of the sewer system is not only a mandate, but it helps save us money treating clean storm water. Do you want to elaborate on the other areas?
Just that we're beginning work on the next five-year master plan update. We just installed a bunch of temporary meters and be updating the flow model. So that, that process is required every five years, and that will spell out what we do over the next five years. So that, that's due to DEP at the end of this year, which they review and approve, and we usually have plans in there that they hold us to over the course of that five years. So we don't know exactly what we need to do until that plan is completed.
All right. Thank you so much.
Counselor Najin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, there's work that's already being done right now at that exact spot, correct? We're working on, so the paving on both Whipple and I think the adjacent cottage had been suspended based on some of the work that was, needed to be done for the drainage. And so there's, all of the pieces that are being worked on right now will allow the very delayed paving to kind of catch up. Is that correct?
Everything on the east side of the tracks will be done this year, including separation of that whole area of Cottage, Whipple.
Do you have, like, just off the top of your head, do you know what the pavement is graded out there, like what the grading is for that, for what exists at the moment?
As far as the PCI rating, not off the top of my head, no. I don't know.
Very low, I assume.
It's very low.
Yeah, okay.
Probably less than twenty.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
If I may, I noticed that we have our facilities director here, Louis Turcot. If you can please adjust the temperature down in this room, if it's possible, that would be great. Director Roy, please carry on.
So if there's no further questions on the CSO, the next project that we will be going over is the rehabilitation of the old sanitary sewer mains and manholes, which is on page one hundred of your book. This will address structural issues that have been identified by closed-circuit television videos, requesting a million-two. The funds will be mostly towards a cured-in-place liner, which is installed from a manhole to manhole without excavation. It's a trenchless pipe repair method that's involved inserting a flexible saturated liner into the existing pipe. The line hardens and adheres to the existing pipe's surface, effectively sealing any cracks or leaks and creating a durable, long-term solution. Environmental Protection Agency Administration Order signed in 2017 requires many specific actions the city must take. This is a minimum funding requirement that we are requesting. Any questions on that project?
Counselor Najin.
Just in general, for the overall project, because we've been doing this for quite a while now, how, how much more sewer do we have to do, basically, to line in place? Like, how much have we done? How much do we have to do?
Unlike water, that's not directly, I was going to give Jeff a little bit to think about it, but the, we have 150 miles of sewer collection system. We just finished videoing all of that. I can tell you that we will be working on the next Forbes Seable Future to line these sewers. And you have it in the five-year plan and what we're looking at. We're actually looking to ramp it up. Do we have a number?
No, 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 chief.
Right. So where we don't need to, we aren't. If it's structurally sound, we've got some brick sewers there in good shape, our interceptor is in good shape, but on some of the older mid-seventies and sixties pipe, that's where we're looking at lining. It's most of the neighborhoods, and we try to get ahead of that on any of the projects. But we're, we're expecting the next five years to be spending this minimum amount to be able to address issues.
Thank you.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. Director Gonya, the question was, what percentage are, where are, we don't know?
I do not have that number with us tonight. We can get back to you on what that percentage is.
Okay, so we don't know whether the five years is going to get us to 99 percent, or...
We are not looking to get to 99 percent. A lot of our larger pipe was put in the mid-seventies. It's a higher-class reinforced concrete. So if we don't have any, any issues with those pipes, and the latest inspections don't show that, but we can get you that number.
Okay, thank you. Are we reviewing these inspections ourselves, or do we have a contractor doing that?
So the contractor that's doing the inspections actually gives us a report that flags the deficiencies and gives a code. It's done under NASCO standard, so those numbers aren't getting changed by who the vendor is. We're consistent across all of our inspections. It is being flagged, so our staff in Jeff's division are also NASCO-trained, so we're reviewing it as well when those come in. So assistant city engineer, as well as our technicians, are reviewing those.
Okay, and I think I heard you say that we've just completed inspecting 150 miles of sewer.
We have, this year, finished with our 100 percent. We're still fine, I would say like 99 percent.
Okay.
We still have some missing manholes and some dead ends that are outliers, but it's like, I think we're under two dozen.
All right. So we should know this year, then, have an idea on what future sliplining and replacement costs will be, once that study is fully absorbed, I'm guessing. And that'll be this year?
I think, right now, we are looking at the next five of being able to maintain this level. So I don't, I don't have a percentage. We haven't fully, we have some numbers. I think if, do you know what the overall assessment?
I know we have a contract that just began to line about six miles. We've been trying to line about five or six miles a year, based on this funding level. But I, we don't, we don't have it laid out over the next ten years or, at this point, just yet.
Okay, maybe I'm not asking the question properly, then. We have a report which identifies the condition of the vast majority of our sewers, and I'm hearing that that report hasn't been fully absorbed yet. We're still studying it and reviewing it.
Correct.
And my question is, when will we have that report absorbed so that we can then begin to say, okay, at 101.2 million a year, we anticipate that in seven years, we will be complete? The question is really, when are we going to have?
What's our full capital outlay?
Full, no, when are we fully going to understand what the report says? And that, I'm assuming, will be very shortly, this year?
Please use the mic, thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't really have an answer for that, I'm sorry, at this time.
I can, I can tell you where, all of this information's coming in digitally into our asset management, which is Beehive, so we can globally look at the whole city and see what ratings those are. We're required under the AO to inspect all pipes again within 10 years, 100 percent inspection again. So as, you know, we have clay tile pipe out there that's notorious for leaking joints, for fractures, and for failing. So those are our highest priority. We can give you a breakdown on what percentage those are at higher risk and get back to you with an assessment on that. But I, I think the next five years, what we've looked at, I don't see that going away.
Okay.
I can tell you that we're not looking to, to line and rehab 100 percent of the system.
I would hope not.
Right. So we can give you a better categorization of what percentage is the clay and the higher risk, and what timeframe we think to know that. I think, we don't have those numbers today. I think we can give a pretty confident assessment, and that's what this has been based on.
Okay, thank you.
Right, just to recap, I guess, so we have 150 miles of sewer pipe, but we're not needing to reline all of it.
Correct.
And we can do, like, what, five, six miles a year?
That is the level of funding right now. So depending on how competitive it is, and we could get, we could get more for that, but that's what we're looking at right now.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Najin.
Sorry, just that, now, I'm really interested. So we have to inspect the entire system every 10 years, is that correct?
Correct.
And then, when we, at that point, we make repairs where we, where we find it appropriate with the cured-in-place lining, right?
We've been doing that every year. So as we find deficiencies and staying ahead of projects, we've been lining these sewers.
What is the average lifespan of the cured-in-place lining? Just out of cur, I'm, I'm just wondering if every 10 years, if we're always going to be behind? That's what I'm asking.
So the, the clay tile pipe and brick lines went in early when the city was built. So at this point, most, most of the design standards are seeing 50-plus years on the lining. We're not, we're not going for, typically, when you bid a liner, you're looking at whether it's fully, fully deteriorated. We're, we're doing a liner that's assuming that the host pipe is in fairly good shape. So we're, I would say we're more than 50 years on these lining products.
Thank you. Yep.
Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question that I have, if, correct me if I'm wrong, did I just hear you can only do five to six miles a year, or, with this money?
Correct.
So for 120, 1.2 million dollars is five or six?
Correct. Yep. And this is the cheaper option than direct replacement. We have bid other options and technologies, pipe bursting or sliplining, where you're pulling different things. So we're constantly trying to, you know, find the most economical way to seal these pipes up and take care of either structural or infiltration issues.
So in 10 years, we're looking at maybe 50 or 60 miles, and then we're going to have to re-inspect again?
The re-inspection is ongoing. The administrative order with EPA has no sunset clause. It says you do these things, and then you're out of it. We have an annual report. We've got cleaning requirements. We have the inspection requirements every 10 years, so it's manholes and pipe. So we're updating the information every year and looking ahead to what's planned in the other capitals, the street jobs and DOT jobs, and trying to stay a year or two ahead of that with these lining jobs.
All right, thank you.
But we'll, we'll give you an answer on what effective, it's, it's kind of like on the water side, we're not looking to change all the water pipes in the system, right? Right now, we've been going after the unlined cast iron pipes. Right now, on the sewer side, we're going after clay pipe, asbestos cement, and brick that are structural issues. If we're seeing it doesn't need lining, then, then we don't line it.
Thank you.
Yep.
At this point, I do feel that this topic has been thoroughly discussed, but, but just since you mentioned since when the city was built, so the, what's the oldest pipe? Is it the clay pipe that's the oldest?
The brick.
The brick. And what year would that have been laid?
When, before the mills were actually built, so a lot of the, we have a sewer that runs underneath Lisbon Street through the Public Works yard and behind Grimmel's gas station. That was built as part of the whole canal system, and that's our old, that's my understanding of our oldest pipe. And they pretty much, the pipes were just going straight to the river. So any of the pen stocks, they brought water into the canals, utilized it, and everything went to the river. So those are our oldest. We have another brick line that has been lined. It's been sliplined, and it goes from Oak, Oak Street parking garage and parking area underneath Lisbon Street, Bates Mill Five, the canal, all the way to Lincoln Street, where it ties into our interceptor. It used to go straight out to the river.
Right.
And that was lined. So these, these are infrastructure that was built to any of the mills.
So Counselor Najin, you were right. We're talking like, what, mid, mid-1800s?
Eighteen fifty is the, the oldest one I'm aware of, it's that one, that one. We have records of eighteen fifty, eighteen fifty-one, when they, right around when they built the canals.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I'll sit.
Director Roy.
So the next project is the collection systems inspection and rehabilitation, which is on page 103 of your LCIP book. For 725,000, this project will continue the general condition assessment of the city's sewer's collection system by cleaning and a video inspection sewer mains and manhole. EPA Administration Order requires the city to perform a condition assessment on at least 10 percent of the sanitary sewer collection system and manhole annually. We are requesting the minimum requirement. The city must also perform cleaning on at least 20 percent of the collection systems each year. Any questions on this project?
Counselor Chittam.
Now I'm confused, because I thought I just heard that we had finished the inspection.
Correct. In 2017, when the administrative order was finalized, it said we're to, every 10 years, complete 100 percent of the inspection, ongoing. So there's no sunset clause, there's no until 2040 or anything like that. So every 10 years. So we just completed 100, 100 percent of inspection, and it's time to restart.
Now we're starting over again.
We're in year one of year 10 of 100 percent inspection.
All right. Just spitballing here, but would we be compliant if we waited until year nine and did the whole system then, for 1.7 million?
I asked that question, early on, when we came into this. DEP and EPA are overseeing this administrative order, so DEP is making sure that we don't have any dry weather overflows and we're compliant. Doing it all in one year is very impractical. So we have a contractor out there, one crew, working from April through mid-fall, depending on the weather, doing this work. And the easy stuff is in the neighborhoods. The difficult stuff that we've left till last is tying up either night work or big intersections and those type of things. So we, we find that if we can do 10, we get a little bit behind, they haven't fined us. We get a little bit ahead, but to do it all in one or two years, I think, would be undoable.
So this, then, is an ongoing perpetual forever project?
Correct.
Would it make sense to put this in the operating fund instead of bonding it?
That would mean the sewer rates would end up going up. To, to have that million-two, if you're talking about both projects, and the 725 in the operating, that would mean the sewer and...
I understand this year, Director Roy, but I'm talking about over the longer term. We're going to pay for it one way or another, and we either pay for it from operating funds at a dollar-for-dollar, or we pay for it by bonding it at a dollar fifteen or a dollar eight per, or a dollar four, I guess, per dollar. So it would be less expensive if we didn't have to bond the issue, bond it to borrow the money to do it, and if we could somehow work our way into putting this into the operating fund. Yes, the rates are going to go up because the money's going to have to be spent. I'm just arguing that if we spend it as a, create a sinking fund or spend it as part of the operating budget, then we would no longer have the interest charge on it. And I'm not advocating that we do that this year, but that we begin seriously thinking about it. If this is a perpetual cost that we will continuously be looking at, and it's not going to go down year by year, it will continue to rise, but this sounds to me like something that really is an operational expense.
Well, it's there to extend the life of the asset, so that's why it's bonded. So if this wasn't done, the asset would then need to be fully replaced because it's not extending the life of the asset.
So we have, we can look at what it might take to transition over two or three years or five years in future discussion with, with Director Roy and see what that might impact.
Okay. Yep. I understand the definition of capital, but I'm just looking at it from a purely dollars and cents standpoint. Thank you.
Counselor Najin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To follow up on that point, ultimately, this, if we don't include this into, into the utilities' budget, then we're going to bond for it every single year, correct? We're never going to not bond for it.
Correct.
Okay. But this is, this is the cost of our sewers, this maintenance piece, which is required by the EPA. Otherwise, the other option is to replace our sewer system every 10 years? Do I understand that correctly?
No, this, this is a different pot of money. So this is the inspection piece.
Right.
It came out of a violation we had in, in 2016. So this is really just to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to maintain that infrastructure, like Director Roy said, so...
But the inspections piece is directly tied to the repair piece as well. That's how you just determine whether or not you're going to...
Correct.
And, and again, this is all related to running the sewer system.
Though the, to Counselor Chittam's point, that the inspections need to happen every year, whether we, and whether we fix it or not is depending on what we find. So there's a potential that we could be bonding the repairs every other year or something like that in the future, and then deal with the inspections on an annual basis.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Glenn, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. A what-if question. What if the EPA goes away, or the DEP needs not require? What do you have in place? Fail-safe, not, I'm not saying not do the inspections. Are you able to track it, to keep track of what's going on? Should we, A, no funding or have no requirement?
So as, as part of operating a utility, I, I will say that, you know, we, being an old community, being a mill community, there's been tens of millions of dollars invested in the sewer system since the Clean Water Act. That goes away, and our basic function is really to provide services and not pollute. So we're already doing all that work. We're just reporting it to EPA or DEP in, in reality, and we self-report. There are some small details we miss here and there, just because we're, we're busy, but we generally, I think, are doing a very good job protecting the health, the safety of the, of everybody in the city, as well as the environment. So I, we can do this. If EPA goes away, we're, we're just, we're still keep doing what we're doing. It's basic operations is what it is. Another source that, you know, this is a reporting piece of this violation, but under other rules, we just, we need to maintain operations.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Further questions on this? Director Roy.
So next would be the sewer pump station and generator replacement, which is on page 106 of your book. Requesting 475,000, this is a full replacement of the Foss Road Two Pump Station with a new recessed suction pump station. If the pump station fails, this can result in sanitary sewer overflows and fines from the DEP, Local and Environmental Protection Agency, which is federal. The older pump station requires more maintenance and emergency calls, which increases overtime. Some of the equipment is over 35 years old, and the parts are not available for the maintenance needed. Any questions on this project? Seeing none, we'll move over to storm drain inspection, which is on page 108 of your LCIP book. Requesting 250,000, the city has approximately 125 miles of storm drains. This project is for general condition assessments of the city's storm drain systems through the used, through the use of the closed-circuit television video. The city began this process in fiscal year 2019. This will also help identify illicit connections to the stormwater systems that are a violation of the Clean Water Act and the National Pollutant Discharge Eliminated, Elimination System, MS4 Permanent Requirements. This program has been very helpful in identifying problems prior to paving a street. This allows repairs to be planned ahead and avoid costly change orders. Any questions on this project?
Counselor Chittam.
Is this run in the same manner as the sanitary system, so this is an ongoing expense for a storm drain inspection every year?
This is. Unlike the sewer side, we have not had a violation that required the reporting that's there, but there's ongoing reporting that we annually do see a kind of, we have like four different reports coming out for regulations in different pockets. This one is the, what's called the MS4. So yes, it's similar. It's making sure that, right now, our highest risk is the corrugated metal culverts, storm drains and underdrains that were put in. A lot of these are right under curb lines on all major arterials and... A lot of these are right under curb lines on all major arterials and others, so...
Yeah. I'm less worried about the reporting requirements than I am about good stewardship of our infrastructure. So, are we expecting a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar storm drain inspection program annually going forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Same, same, I'm gonna ditto what I said before.
Further questions?
So, next is the storm drain repairs on page one oh nine. They're requesting seven hundred thousand. The project is to add and repair storm drain infrastructure in conjunction with street maintenance program. Adding the proper drainage will greatly improve the life of the pavement and will address structural issues prior to paving that will prevent cave-ins or other pavement failures on newly paved roads. It is Public Works Department goal to improve the city's pavement conditions, and this is needed in conjunction with the street maintenance program to achieve this goal. Any questions on this project?
Counselor Nagin.
I'm just interested in, you don't have to provide it right now, and I don't think you'd have it right now, but you have the five years kind of mapped out here with the expenses. Do you have, does it just follow the paving schedule? Or is there, or is there like a separate? Reason why I'm asking this is because I believe there are drainage systems in place in some of the places that you're paving. And so, I'm just wondering, are we putting new drainage in or just replacing the old drainage everywhere that's getting paved?
It's really kind of a mix, yeah. Some places, we're replacing pipes that are in danger of collapse before we pave the road. In other places, some of this is to add underdrain in really wet areas where the pavement continually breaks up, so we can drain the under, you know, drain under the road and prolong the life of the pavement.
Gotcha. And so, do you have a master map of that every year, or does it come up as the projects go out to bid?
We really look at it as, you know, as we're designing the projects as they come up.
Okay, perfect. So, this is kind of like, not for specific projects, it's a set amount of money for what you expect to spend?
Right.
Gotcha.
One example is the College Street culvert that's currently closing College Street. That's actually DOT has taken that initiative, they were planning to replace that. So, it can be a culvert, a large culvert like that, which is actually declared like a bridge. So, all of our rural roads that have those culverts to actually storm drain systems with catch basin manholes and all that. So, it's all strain, storm drained throughout the city. And this does not include, like ditching and open drainage that we have that the highway division takes care of.
Okay. Director Roy.
Next project is the stormwater equipment replacement program for three hundred and ninety-five, which can be found on page one fourteen of your LCIP. This year, they're looking to replace a twenty-ten Alliance mechanical sweeper due to the age, condition, and the move to a more efficient air sweeper. The two thousand and ten has five thousand three hundred hours and has incurred over seventy thousand five hundred in cost and repairs. Parts for the two thousand and ten are becoming unavailable, and there is a frequent downtime which causes loss of productivity. You have a list of the five-year equipment that they're requesting on page one fifteen. Any questions on the sweeper?
Counselor Chittam.
Lead times and how accurate is this estimate now, given the status of flux that's been going on with the local, I mean, with the international economy?
I'm Philip Branser, I'm the Fleet Operations Superintendent. What's coming in the future, we have no idea. These numbers were based on what we usually see, an increase and a little bit more, because we know everything's going up quite well. Most of this equipment is taking over a year to get these days. We used to build stuff in six months to a year, now it's a year, year and a half to two years, depending on what it is. And we just received a bucket truck that was ordered in twenty twenty-two, a month ago. So, it's up in the air as to how long anything takes anymore. You're at the mercy of electronics and steel, which is, as you all know, is gonna be a chaotic state if things go the way they are.
Do we pay upfront costs? I've heard recently that, it was today, in fact, that we've got to pay fifty percent down before service even begins, a completely unrelated thing, but do these vehicles require upfront payment, or is it cash on receipt?
No, we don't have to pay them upfront. We do on occasion, if the chassis comes in and the body is not ready, we do buy the chassis when they're delivered, because they need to have the floor plan to order more chassis soon.
Thank you, sir.
So, we'll move to the water projects. Distribution of the water main replacement and rehabilitation. Requesting two point four million. This can be found on page one seventeen of your LCIP book. This is to replace old cast iron pipes on the street below. So, they are, they have multiple streets that they will be working on. Wilson Street, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Hamel Street, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Demi Circle, two hundred and four thousand. Belgrade Avenue, a hundred and seventy thousand. Suzanne Street, two hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred. Claire Street, a hundred and eighty two hundred. Sand Hill Road, two hundred and twelve, five hundred. Novell Street, a hundred and nineteen thousand. Tall Pines Drive, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. This one's a little higher, due to the replacement pipe is an eight-inch instead of a six-inch. All the others are six-inch pipes. Any questions on these projects?
Counselor Chittam.
I'm confident that you've looked at future demands when you're replacing six with six and eight with eight.
Yes. Generally, what's happened in our, in our usage is it's gone down. Just through, you know, rehabilitation of homes or even new homes coming in, there was a conversation probably twenty years ago, what are we doing for water conservation? We're seeing that happen in customers' homes. So, we are actually downsizing sometimes with the pipes, just to keep, maintain good water quality, good flow. We found that, you know, if there's sprinklers or fire service to a certain area, we need to maintain those large pipes for capacity to fight fires, especially in the urbanized, built-up areas. But we are looking at those, what's the use? We want to make sure we, we have fresh water going to customers' taps, but can still fight fires.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next project is the water pump station, which is on page one twenty-five of your LCIP book. They're requesting four hundred thousand dollars. Central Avenue Water Pump Station was installed in nineteen eighty-six. This project will cover the replacement of the generator and the switchboard. This will maintain reliability and efficiency operations of the pump station to continue uninterrupted delivery of safe drinking water and fire flows to customers. Any questions on this project?
Counselor Glant.
My only question is, we have out money twenty-seven through thirty. What is that money gonna be used for?
I don't have that schedule right now, but I can tell you that this is strictly for the water pump stations. So, depending on what we've seen for improvements or be able to maintain these is what we've laid out on that. I thought we had a detail sheet, but...
Yep. My question would be, wouldn't it be just smarter to bond six seventy-five this year and be done with it and not add small amounts to the future bonds? I mean, you know, I just...
So, not, not, not all, so in this year, we're showing how we would propose to pay for it. There are some years where it may be advantageous, per Counselor Chittam, to put in the operations to pay for this. Not outlier years doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna be bonded.
Alright. Thank you.
So, each year, we update what we think it should be, whether it's bonded or cash.
Alright. Thank you.
And that concludes our LCIP for the utilities, and we'll move to the fund balance. I'm gonna request, instead of going down the line, that we have the small departments come up first, and then we'll come back to Kevin's departments, because his is the largest. That way, the others don't have to sit here. Is that okay?
Yes. Counselor Herman, did you have some thoughts?
Yes, just before we shifted gears, I just wanted to reiterate. So, all of those projects that we talked about previously are all funded through bonding through the utilities, right?
Correct.
So, they're, they're paid for by the ratepayers and not through the property taxes.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I like your plan, Director Roy, just, yeah, we're good. Ready when you are.
So, we'll call up MIS first.
Craig Stare, the IT Director.
So, on page thirty-two of your budget book, you'll see the list of fund balance projects. His are the first two projects. First one is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred for PCs, laptops, and tablets. And the second one is for eight thousand one hundred for replacement monitors. Do you have any questions on that?
Counselor Herman.
Thank you. So, this is just sort of the general, you know, the schedule that we replace things with?
Yes. Normal replacement schedule.
Yeah. Alright. Thanks.
Counselor Chittam.
Citywide?
Yes. Excluding schools. We don't, we don't cover the schools.
The schools cover themselves.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if we want to go through these all first, or if you guys want to vote on whether you want to keep these in the fund balance or remove the projects? How you want to handle that?
Yes, Counselor Chittam.
Well, first of all, we're not voting tonight. I think we can go through them all, and if we have questions, that might be more expeditious, so that these good folks can get out of here maybe a little earlier.
Okay.
If everyone's agreeable with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm sure that we'll reach broad consensus on most of these, and so, yeah, I think we can quickly go through them, and if councilors have grave concern over an item, they can, they can raise it at that time.
So, are we all set with the two first projects?
Yes, Counselor Nagin.
Just quickly, we, every year, we make this expenditure. We don't ever delay the replacements. Or have we delayed the replacements, and now we have issues with older computers?
We typically replace them at seven years old, and they've been pretty much exhausted at that point, and they're outdated. And at this point, we're running into a roadblock with Windows eleven not being supported on a, on a lot of machines, so...
So, we're talking about computers that are at least seven years old for the most part?
Yes, typically, yeah, seven years old.
Thank you.
If we're all set with MIS, we'll bring up assessing next. Assessing is on line three. This is for twenty thousand for personal property reevaluation. Are there any questions?
Counselor Chittam. I'm sorry, do you mind introducing yourself first?
I'm Ashley Fosher, I'm the Senior Personal Property Appraiser.
Thank you for being here. Counselor Chittam.
Welcome. I appreciate you being here. Personal property is a particular bugaboo of mine. When you do personal property appraisals, do you actually inspect the property? Do you, do you go to the businesses and look at their machines and make sure that the inventory that they've submitted to you is accurate?
In an ideal world, yes. Would love to. Timing-wise, just last year, I had about a little over twelve hundred accounts to process. And between the two state programs that we offer, it's a lot of taking what they give for an asset list and going through it, and then I have my mandated list of who I go out to see.
So, this valuation, then, can you describe to me how it works? We understand how the real property valuation is progressing, but how does it work on the personal property?
So, what we're seeking is they would use our GIS and then aerial photography. And then they would send out a, like, similar to the data mailer, but it would go a lot smoother than the real estate side of it for the mailer.
GIS is gonna show you businesses? Now, this personal property tax, just so that I'm clear, is tax on business equipment?
Correct.
So, you use the GIS to identify businesses?
Correct.
And simply send them a request to update their, because businesses typically submit to you a list of their equipment upon request?
I send a request in February for them to. Majority of them actually do not comply.
Yeah, that's not surprising. I don't want to take the council's time to explain my own personal experience with personal property tax, but I'm concerned that it is one of the most inequitable taxes that the city assesses, that there are so many businesses out there that are not claiming the personal property that is taxable, and we're not receiving those taxes. So, I'm encouraged that we're doing evaluation, but I'm a little discouraged, because it sounds to me as though we're simply asking them the same questions that we usually ask them every year. Is that, is that not a fair statement?
That's not a fair statement, because instead of just putting the request and giving them the option not to, their mailer would be more specific of what they would be required to tell.
Is there any consequence for a business that fails to respond?
That is a great question that I'll have to get back to you on for the company side of it. I could answer it for citywide, but not for this company.
So, we, we're contracting this service?
Correct.
Alright. Okay. I would like to stay on top of this. I do have a particular personal interest in personal property tax, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes. Do we, do we have any questions on this item? Counselor Glant.
Yes, similar to Counselor Chittam's question, the twenty thousand is for a contractor. Is that enough money to do a thorough job? We got, do we have a low bidder that maybe that's why they're not out there beating on doors or doing what needs to be done?
It is enough. We were actually given twenty thousand last year, so this is the final part to get this done.
To finish the whole evaluation?
Correct.
What was the total cost for this one particular company?
Forty, forty for the personal property, and then they're also doing the real estate piece, correct? You're using...
Do you mind moving the mic closer to you?
You're using Tyler, right?
That is another great question. I'm not sure...
I believe they're using Tyler for the same personal property as the company that's doing the reevaluation. So, they're using the same company.
Alright, thank you. I guess I would say to the administrator, I'd like to have a talk about this sometime in June when we get done the budget, so we can figure out exactly what's going on, because I believe with Counselor Chittam says that we're probably taking it in the wrong direction for money to the city, because most people will shelter or hide their stuff when they replace it or change it. So, I just would like to get him in here and talk to people and see if we can't get a better system.
Yeah, we'll make sure we have Director Healy here when we have these discussions.
Alright, thank you.
I would like to just add that we believe we should do the audit, so it's similar to the real estate. We keep it fair and equitable, and right now, it's just playing catch-up too much, that being able to get this out there, have it accurate. There are a lot of businesses that I don't have that I discover just driving, living in the city. So, it's, it would be great to have, similar to the real estate, a clean slate.
Yep, good. I agree.
We are not faulting your department. Further questions about this item?
Next, we'll, we'll move to police on line...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twelve and thirteen.
Sure. Thank you. I'm Chief Dave St. Pierre, and I brought with me Sergeant Ryan Rostron. He is the keeper of all the records, basically, with the new vehicles, whenever we purchase vehicles. He has a wealth of knowledge, as he has regular contact with the dealerships, with our fleet manager, what our needs are going forward.
So, they are requesting for vehicles, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred for six Ford Explorers, one F-one-fifty pickup, three Chevy Tahos, minus the trade-ins for the vehicles that they will be selling, and then sixteen thousand five hundred for car camera systems and mobile radios for the new Cruisers. Any questions on those two items?
I'm just curious, how many vehicles does the police department have? Please use the mic. Just move the mic, like, really close to you.
When you're getting, it depends on what you're, because some of them are specialized, so you've got some that are actually hazmat, that are black and whites, but they actually belong now to the fire department with the hazmat team, so taking those out. You've, you normally have seven on patrol plus supervisors. You'll have three spare, so you've got thirteen black and whites right now. And I think you have ten, eleven, eleven in CID. You have the chief and deputy chiefs. The chief and deputy chiefs.
Did you want to say something, Administrator O'Malley?
I just wanted to tone down the cop talk. The black and white, he means the patrol cruisers that the officers ride.
I, I understood what he meant, but I appreciate that for our folks at home.
I had faith.
Counselor Galant.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have enough cars?
No, we do not.
How many cars do you need?
We're asking for, this, this budget would.
I'm sorry, if you can just, yeah, there you go.
So this budget would add three cars on top of what we have, so it'd be trading in seven, we'd be adding three on top of that one. That's still, we're trying to be, you know, as fiscally responsible as we can be with these cars. The problem we have now is that the Chargers have been, being swapped over to the Explorers. Dodge is not supporting the Chargers well at all, because they've gone to an electric Charger. So we've currently had one at, one of the Dodge dealerships for almost six months, waiting on a warranted transmission. We have another one that has been sitting in our lot for four weeks, just waiting for an appointment to get in, for them to look at it. So those are a lot of the, the issues that we constantly have. Cars that are down, even if they're under warranty, we're still, still down them all the time. The Fords have been a little bit better to us, but they're all, when a car goes down with any issues, they're down for a while, unfortunately. The, the other issue you get with those when we're swapping them over is we have that downtime. It takes some time to swap a car over, even though we have a dedicated guy. He's four to five days to strip everything out of a car, and it's seven to ten days to put one back together. So you have quite a bit of time down, because when you put together a new car, you, you start over, because you pull the entire interior out of it, the seats are out of it, half of the dash is out, the side panels on the inside are out. So there's quite a bit of work to those, so that's another reason, looking to get a few more cars so that we actually can get those on the road a little bit quicker. I spoke to Counselor Chittam before about this issue of, that's why we only get one, one dealership that even wants to bid, because we can't swap a car quick enough, so when they give us a trade price, they don't, they know they're going to be waiting to get their trade back in. Where if we have enough cars, we can, we can strip one down, down it, and have that, and hopefully, the dealership that we've been dealing with has been great to us, but it would, you know, competition's always good when a bid, so that would definitely help.
Alright, thank you.
Counselor Nagy.
So quickly, if I get this right, there are eleven black and whites and, or thirteen black and whites and eleven vehicles that are designated for either CID or for, for admin. Really quickly, the CID vehicles can't be used for patrol either, correct? They're not equipped correctly?
We're, we're starting to actually set them up now so that we can. In the past, we could not. Now, when we, when we do one, we are actually putting blue lights in, and obviously, it's, you know, it's not fully marked. But we are putting lights into it, we've got a radio into it, so we can move them back a little bit. So it's been, when occasionally they can take them on some of the details in the evenings. You take like the most recent detail we've had, the country kitchen, we were able to send a couple cars at night, so that eases our cruiser issues up. So we are trying to set them up now, and the other good part of doing that is that when we have enough of them, when we are, when we swap a vehicle over, we can actually move it just straight over to CID, because we do recycle some of our patrol cars. So now, getting them so they're closer, closer matched, as far as the lights, other than light bar, we can slide one over, which is again, trying to save the downtime of the swap overs.
And so out of the thirteen vehicles that you currently have for patrol, how many are out of commission at the moment?
Two. And that's, and we have two.
Is that the average?
Yes, two, if we only have two down, that's kind of good.
So that's the low average?
That's the low end. We have two currently with check engine lights, one that has AC that is not that old. So we have two with check engine lights, one with an AC unit that only works on half of the dash. None of these cars are very old, it's just, I think we all know the quality of cars since twenty-twenty is not the same as it used to be. It's across the board, doesn't matter what we buy. The Tahos have got the AC issues, the Chargers have got every issue, and the Fords got a few electronic issues. So it depends on which problem you want to chase.
Thank you.
Well, and it should be noted that these vehicles are running practically twenty-four seven, right?
That is correct.
Like they're idling, they're hardly ever off, they're just idling?
Right.
Yeah.
We, we shut them off, we do, we do tell them to shut them off, but you know, you take the other night when it's snowing out, those cars are outside, and you're not shutting it off then, because they have to be able to go. So we do our best to, to regulate when they need to shut them down, but it, it's difficult. There is days that, that cars, it ran a lot more hours than it was shut off.
Yeah, no, that's not criticism, I mean, that's part of the job, you've got to keep the car running so you can use it, I understand.
If I may also add, these cars, you know, unfortunately aren't driven like, you know, you're going to the grocery store, your mom's going to the grocery store. You know, we encourage the, the officers to obviously drive with due regard, but they are responding to emergency calls. So they're start, stop, start, stop. A lot of them spend a lot of time in the downtown areas, so they're, they're going through breaks. They're out there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, in all of the weather, salt, brine, whatever affects them. So they don't last forever, you know, and I just want to add one more thing too, if I could. We, we did a study a couple of years ago in twenty-twenty-two, just of other agencies similar to us, just to, just to see how many cars they had per officer, for instance, and we were actually number eight out of the, the eight that we, that we polled for, you know, like Westbrook, for instance, had one point three officers per car. We're up to three officers per car. So that does play a, a role, and it has an impact on us, like, like Sergeant Rostron said, when we have details, we have to, you know, supply the cruiser for them, whether they're construction details, where we mandatory somebody, if it's on a main thoroughfare, like Main Street, East Avenue, Sabata Street, Lisbon Street, or, or the like. You know, so we, we definitely, we're not, you know, we've heard from, from council in the past that we need more new cars, so we asked for a couple extras this year. Also, to be noteworthy is that we did ask for some, we, we have a congressional directed spending request that's, that's in effect right now. Unfortunately, we didn't get the funding for FY twenty-five. We were really confident we were going to get, so we would have got ten cruisers from that. We are completing that, can, can the directed spending request again, it's due on the fourteenth, and we're asking once again for those ten cars, so just to keep you abreast of that.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. You said we have three officers per car. What would be the idea, if we had one officer per car, the cars would obviously see less use, they would last longer. They're already going to last immeasurably longer, because they're going to be kept out of the weather in the new facility, so we may over time see a little improvement there. But if we could have one car per officer, one officer per car, what would that take in terms of a fleet size?
I want the mayor to yell at me. The, what is, are you talking like a take-home car? For the officer, or one that's truly only assigned to that officer?
I think I am. I don't know enough about it, but when I hear the statistics, that, that the state police basically have take-home cars, right?
Correct.
You, you get assigned a car, and that's your car until it wears out.
Correct.
It sits idle for twelve hours a day, which extends its life considerably. So I don't know quite how to get there, but there would be an ideal goal.
Right. The, you figure the number of officers we have is eighty that were allowed, so you'd be looking at a, right? Eighty-six. So you'd be going to quite an increase. You'd need, you know, off the top of my head, roughly sixty cars, because you need a couple of spares in there as well. So if you truly wanted everybody to have a take-home car, you'd be about sixty, you'd be purchasing sixty to sixty-five cars in that first.
But that includes CID and, and all of the folks, the detectives who are not on patrol, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, I guess I'm talking about patrol.
So, thirteen shift.
Well, if, if you look at these, these numbers from this study that I did, this might help put things into perspective. Westbrook had one point three, like I said, one point three officers per cruisers. They actually have twenty marked cruisers and thirteen unmarked cruisers for a total of thirty-three. So answering your question, I mean, the state police does have take-home cruisers, they're responsible for very large areas. They're also on call at where our patrol officers are not. Certainly, they're subject to call in, should anything big happen, such as October twenty-fifth, obviously, was unprecedented, and we could have used all the equipment known to man, and, and cruisers for everybody, vests, helmets, and so on and so forth. So it is important to have cruisers, and I, and I recognize that, and, and I want to, you know, pass that on to you too. I think everybody here kind of agrees that we, we probably need more cruisers. There's a cost to it, unfortunately.
You've elected this year to increase your fleet by three. And you've said that two are typically down. Let me ask it, how many patrol officers do you have?
Currently, we're at seventy-eight sworn, oh, patrol officers.
Patrol, right.
If you eliminate all the detectives, you're going to be at about sixty.
Sixty, okay. Alright, well, we could make a dent in that three officers per car if we did a gradual increase, three cars per three new, new cars, or addition of three cars per year. I don't know what the financial impact would be, I don't know how badly that would hit. Of course, congressionally directed spending would help a great deal in that regard. Just a thought. I, I recognize that there are insufficient vehicles. These things are running twenty-four hours a day, they're wearing out fast, they're being driven ruggedly and hard. And Detroit, or whoever makes cars these days, doesn't make them for that, for that service. I appreciate that. But I would like to think about heading in the direction of fewer officers per cruiser.
Counselor Herman.
Thank you. You touched on it a little bit, but my question was about when we, when we trade cars in, I, I realize, you know, they get driven really hard and, and they, they don't last forever. But I wonder if there's, and maybe you're already doing this, but if there's a use for taking a car that maybe it's not up to snuff for patrol, but I don't know, maybe a detective could, could, you know, drive to where they're, whatever they're, you know, looking at around town. Not that we want anyone in anything unsafe, or that's going to break down, leave them stranded, but, but maybe some of those older cruisers could be, could be sort of retired to detective work or something like that?
Yes, and actually, in this budget, I have a couple that do slide over. I tend to slide the Tahos over, one because they're driven by corporals and by sergeants and lieutenants, so they get a little less mileage, they don't go code quite the way that a regular patrol officer does. So those are better, so we do slide those over to CID. Most of the black Tahos that you see that CID have did come from patrol, so we do slide quite a few of them over. We've slid some of the Explorers over as well. We used to always slide the Chargers over. Problem with the Chargers are, I don't know if we've had one yet that made it over a hundred thousand miles before they had to put an engine into it. Usually under warranty for the first hundred, but after they reach that hundred, they wash their hands of it. So you figure, I think it was two years ago, when I was out in front of the budget committee, asking for money in the middle of a year, because we had a car that, you know, lost an engine. So it's, it's a debate. Some of the outside cars, we do try to slide some over. Generally, out of the six or seven cars that we trade every year, two or three are worth the slide over, and the rest need to leave.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Nagy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So really quickly, the, I think the take-home car argument is something you're going to continue to hear. You know, I, I look at the recruitment levels and, and, you know, at some point in time, you can't just offer pay, you have to figure out something else in there too. How mu, do you have any idea, like I look at public works, right, and it seems like almost every division head or, you know, unduty person has a take-home car. And so when I think about that model, you know, it, it kind of, it plays into this a little bit. Do we know how many municipalities actually do take-home cars? And I imagine small towns do, right, because it's literally like, you know, the one police officer type of situation, but.
Sure, I can, I can kind of answer that one. A lot of departments have take-home cars for more personnel than we do. The only two people that take cars currently is myself and the deputy chief. In addition, I do allow the on-call detective that's on-call to take the car home.
You can just move the mic over, thank you.
Yeah, so it's really three cars that get taken home, and, and that's even if the detective that's on-call wants to take the car home. But they're certainly authorized to, and I've, I've given them that permission, so. But if you look at other, other agencies, you know, and I use Westbrook just because they're first on my list here. They have, you know, a couple cars that go home, several cars go home with their lieutenants. And we used to have it that our, our lieutenants could take cars home, and that went by the wayside as a cost savings, a cost-saving effort. I mean, some of us live very close, like myself, and some of us live a little further. So realizing that every different officer, we have officers that live all over, some live in Poland, some live in Mechanic Falls, some live in Lisbon, Lewiston, Auburn, you know, the further they live, and it's more miles on the car, even just going back and forth to work. It does have a lot of merit, because typically, they'd take better care of the car if it's their own. They'll have some pride in it, they'll wash it, they'll clean it, they'll keep it up to snuff, they'll keep their gear where they need it. So that has a lot of merit. It's, it's a very expensive initial cost, I would imagine, if we're going to outfit, you know, upwards of forty, fifty people with cruisers for the very seldom times that they actually get called in. And then there's the liability that goes with, you know, like, what are we giving them permission to drive the cars? You know, can they take it to the grocery store, can they take it to the gym, can they take it to various events or something? Obviously, we don't want really that to, to happen. That leads to a whole other host of, of potential issues.
That makes sense. And ultimately, you had mentioned that there are ten cars that were in the earmark that has been paused for this year. Is there any other equipment that, that is crucial, that was in that earmark, that should be somewhere in the budget that maybe is not?
Yeah, it's very possible. I mean, we're looking at, we have a Bearcat rescue vehicle that's in there, that's, you know, to the tune of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I, I typically wanted to leave that up, because that's a high-cost item. And I'm in hopes that we get this directed spending request through that. We also asked for another evidence van, and then we're asking for more rifles, helmets and all that stuff, so we can outfit each one of our cruisers, even the unmarked cruisers, with all of the equipment necessary to respond to whatever they're responding to.
Gotcha, yeah. I appreciate all that information. I just think, like, when we're talking about the limited pool of people who are entering into law enforcement, if we're able to, you know, include equipment that, that really like puts us, sets us aside apart from other, just like the new police station, right? From other departments, maybe that's a way we can compete as well, so that's why I bring it up. And also, I think officer safety, obviously, super important, right? So, you know, maybe it's something that we can revisit at some point.
Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the thoughts that I had as Counselor Nagy was talking. Maybe if we were to get cars to take home for some of the police that live in town, you would probably get more, more recruits or more, more police officers applying to, that are from Lewiston, there'd be more buy-in, right? I think, that's one thing. Another question I had was bulletproof vests. Do you guys have vests? I mean, I, I was reading years ago, or like last year or whatever, weren't we donating some vests? Do we have enough vests for everybody, and?
So I would, I would have to ask my firearms guy, who's also responsible for that, so I think he's right here.
Oh, okay.
Thanks. Yes, so we've done a pretty good job of swapping some vests over. We did spend some money the last couple of years pulling it out of drug forfeiture, trying to get some of them back up because of the different designs. The one I'm wearing tonight is actually a newer one, so now you can tell where we're, I've, I've got a larger plate, and this one's thicker. It is rifle rated, up to certain rifles, not all, but does make a difference. We've been really trying to swap them over. We, we're short some. Some of the issues with buying all at once, and Chief and I have discussed this in the last year quite a bit. If you buy them all at once, they're a five-year shelf life or a five-year use life. So if you buy them all today, five years from now, we're back in front of you asking for a lot of money. So we are still trying to graduate them out. Anybody that's gotten a vest in the last two years, it's big enough to put a plate into, because we talked about just asking for the money for just the rifle plates. If the vest is more than two years old, one, it depends on if somebody's gained or lost weight, gaining is more of an issue. The, if it was, if it was sized correctly, another issue, that comes from the vest company that, that actually sized you. So if you have a vest that's too tight, you won't have room to put a rifle plate in, it's, you know, about three-quarters of an inch thick. So there is some issues with just buying them out. We do still have the, what we call the go-bags that are in the cruisers. They're there. Difficult for guys to put them on over this new style vest, so that's why we're trying to get completely to this style vest. So it is, it is still a need. It's, we're catching, what, twelve, twelve vests a year, I think is what we're. It's, we're catching, what, twelve, twelve vests a year, I think is what we're going on to. So we are catching up, we're about to, probably two cycles away from having everybody into this style, the newest one. You can see some of them, like, pretty much everybody has one that looks like this, just some of these are a little bit bigger now to accommodate that bigger vest. Really, it's more the helmets, then we had put that into the budget for, the last time, the one that we did not get the congressional spending on. Those are the helmets that we, we're still pushing for, but I know the chief just put back into the newest grant that we're trying to get. So the helmets are really probably where we're trying to push the most, just because that's the thing that, just because it fits in my head doesn't mean it fits the next guy's, takes too long to adjust. So that's where everybody having their own helmet is, one of my bigger goals, is the push for firearms.
So correct me if I'm wrong, did we say we were looking at maybe the fourteenth, another round of getting congressional spending?
The fourteenth is when the application is due.
Okay, when would we...
It could take upwards of a year to find out. We were very encouraged with the FY twenty-five request, and then things just didn't happen, and that's, that's, that's government, really. It's, it's no bearing on us, we, we did everything on time. You'll see next week, I'm gonna ask you to, you know, approve me applying for it, basically, accepting the money if we do succeed in getting it.
All right, cool, thank you. So we, we have helmets now, just not one for everyone.
Correct. The helmets that we're running, so the go-bags, so we have ten go-bags, we have ten helmets. We also have some riot helmets, but those are not ballistic-rated. So, yeah, ten, ten actual rifle-rated helmets is what we have right now.
The riot helmets would like, if somebody threw a rock or something?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Further, further questions for the Police Department? I guess we're good? Thank you both.
Next, we'll go to Fire. It's on line page, the line is fourteen to eighteen is what we're gonna be going through.
Chief Karen, are you flying solo here?
I am by myself, I am Mark Karen, the Fire Chief.
So they're requesting sixty-five thousand for the Assistant Fire Chief's vehicle, six thousand for a positive pressure ventilation fan, seventy-five thousand for fire rescue tools, and then for the build-ins, they're requesting ten thousand for the painting, floor, and window treatments, and fifteen thousand for the North Temple roof over the pergola that you mentioned earlier. Any questions on any of those items?
Counselor, Counselor Najin.
Just really quickly, can you explain what the positive pressure ventilation fan is?
So, it's a very large fan, we have, on our Lada Truck Engine Three, which is a Quint, we have the very large fan, the ventilated structure, if it's a fire, it clears the smoke and carbon monoxide out, so it's, it's, we're able to work in there. We have older, probably fifty-year-old electric fans that we're currently using, and then we have one gas-powered one, but the problem with the gas-powered one is that it generates carbon monoxide, so as you're ventilating the structure, you're also filling it with carbon monoxide. So, the newer technology is a battery-operated one. They are crazy expensive, I can't explain why, but it, it, it is, you know, the newest thing on the market that people are using.
Gotcha, and as far as the, the roof over the pergola, if we don't do that, there will be substantial damage to the building.
So we've had issues with rain infiltration with that, just through design failure. The way that the pergola works, in the front, if you've ever driven by, there's a little cement patio outside the kitchen that's uncovered, and when we get a wind-driven rain, which apparently, it is happening more frequently now, it infiltrates the siding and, and gets inside the building. So we are having some sheet rock damage, and we've talked to the architect who designed the station, who we're currently working with on the new Station Five, as well as the contractor, and the solution was to put a roof over that patio, over the pergola, and the current contractor that's working on Station Five, Gabe, told me he would do it for fifteen thousand dollars.
And ultimately, again, that's like, not an optional situation, if we don't fix it, we're gonna have more damage to the building.
Well, we're gonna have damage to the building, if we don't fix it, we're gonna continue to have water infiltration into the building, and it's just gonna well have mold issues at some point.
Are you good, Counselor? Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, I assume we've gone to the architect and asked him to share in the cost of this. This North Temple Street Fire Station is, what, three years old?
Yeah, well, we have not asked him to share in the cost of it, and I, I, it's unlikely they would be receptive to that, but...
Well, you'll never get an answer unless you ask the question.
Yeah, well, I have, I have, well, I don't know if they would accept responsibility for that, other than to say that, you know, it's, it's an application error, maybe this, you know, the siding, the flashing wasn't installed correctly. I, I don't know where I'd go, I mean, if you're directing me to ask for that, I will.
Well, Chief, I can't direct you, I'm, I'm one of seven counselors up here. But I would suggest strongly that you broach the subject with the architect, because it sounds to me as though this is a design flaw. And he's aware of it, but it might be a little more pointed if you say, the taxpayers of Lewiston are being assessed with repairing damage to a three-year-old building, are you willing to contribute to that in any way?
Yeah, I've had, I'm probably not his favorite person, and we have a good relationship, but I've had some hard conversations with him about similar subjects with the current station. As you know, as a member of the Finance Committee, we have some change orders that, you know, I haven't been really happy that, you know, we're having to bear that extra cost for things that were not our prob-, that were not caused by us. However, you know, that's the industry, you know, that, that we're in, you know, that's, those, those, way the contracts are structured, and I don't really know how much, you know, pressure we could apply.
Director Roy, was this a master services agreement? Does the architect, under a master services agreement, or was this a bid, an RFP for fire station design?
I believe it was bid for the RFP, for the fire station. So it was bid before the fire station, actual bid, the building, building.
Right, right, this is not a construction.
But it was built, yeah.
It was an R, Request for Proposals for Design Services for both fire stations, or all three?
So I wasn't part of the bid for the, for Fire Station Four, but it was structured, to my knowledge, it was structured that we wanted to, we were gonna own the design, and when we, when we were getting ready to, to do Station Five, it was with the idea that it would be economies of scale, so they did give us what I believe was a very good price for the services for Station Five.
Administrator O'Malley, do you think there's any merit in pursuing this? I mean, it's only fifteen thousand dollars.
I can solve this right now. Chief Karen, call the architect and ask him if they'll split that.
Thank you.
All right, very good, I'll do that, I will, I'll see him next Wednesday.
I expect a no, but ask the question. Thank you, Administrator O'Malley.
Any other questions for Fire? Next, we'll do Planning and Code.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thanks, Chief.
Sorry, what's next? Oh, yes.
Planning and Code on line nineteen.
Director Connor, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone, my name is John Connor, Director of Planning and Code Enforcement for the City of Lewiston.
So they are requesting fifty thousand for the comprehensive plan implementation. This is done every year, last year, we put in fifty thousand for the comprehensive plan implementation out of fund balance. Any questions on the project for the director?
Counselor Chidham, yeah?
Director Connor, good evening.
Good evening.
Can you tell me what comprehensive plan implementation entails?
So this year, what we've used the, the prior fiscal year's funds for is Smart Pain Park. We, we've done some work with Public Works. There's been a little bit of a shortfall in the funding for some of the stuff that we've wanted done down there, so we're, we're using those funds for that project. Some of our ideas for next year's, for this fiscal year's funds, we've, we've talked a lot about starting a land bank locally, to help with some of the blight, to help with some of the code enforcement issues, to help with some of the, the housing issues. So that's one of the things that we're, that we're looking forward to using, you know, this, this pot of money for. And that does flow into the comp plan, it is in the comp plan recommendation for a land bank.
Thank you, and this is an ongoing fifty thousand dollar request, do you anticipate this being a perennial?
My understanding is, prior to my coming in, I think there was a, a four-year or a five-year period, and it was fifty thousand for each year, so. I would like to see it continue, until we, you know, get everything done that's in the comp plan that the city wants to get done.
Director Roy, can we consider moving that into the operations budget instead of the fund balance?
So it was in the operation, it was pulled out since it's a project to be paid by fund balance to lower the tax rate. So originally, it was, it was in the operation, so anything that's project or a one-time project is moved out to fund balance, and then it is the council's decision whether they wanna fund it, or put it back in operating, or not fund it.
Okay, and the fund balances effectively are savings account. It's, it's a, it's a buffer, if you will, it's, it's a... I, I can't, I can't... Rainy day fund, thank you, Counselor Galant. It's, it's money that we have, that we have not committed to specific items. We have a cap and a ceiling, or a ceiling and a floor for the value of this fund balance. I've gotta think about this, but I'm, I'm curious as to if this is going to be an ongoing cost, and it's paid for from the fund balance, doesn't money going into the fund balance come from the taxpayers ultimately anyway?
Correct, for what wasn't used in the budget for the prior year. It rolls into the fund balance. But since this was a, instead of requesting two-hundred thousand dollars upfront, they requested fifty every year.
Okay, so, I'm hearing then that this is like a four-year plan, a two-hundred thousand dollar, fifty a year? So then it might not be the best candidate to go into the operating budget. Okay, thank you.
And Director Roy, I'm under the impression that fund balance here in the, in the public municipal world is much like retained earnings in the private world.
Correct.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Najin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, we know that we're gonna have to redo our comprehensive plan soon anyways, and in that, whatever spending that we would need, want to set aside for the yearly budget would be outlined in the comp plan usually. A lot of times, there's studies that we account for in these spaces. The land bank model, obviously, I'm a huge supporter of, and I think that it's gonna be something that, if we can get proactive enforcement in our city, as well as targeted redevelopment, in the ways that we've seen successfully in other communities, it's going to put us in a place where, where the traction that we make is going to be pretty impressive quickly. So, i- if we're saying that we can kinda outline some of those plans for the fifty thousand dollars, I think that's maybe a little lower than I would expect, but I'm, I'm super happy, because ultimately, I think our community is definitely looking forward to seeing some of the blight addressed, and also, basically proactive enforcement of, of our code standards, so.
Any other question?
Anything else you'd like to say, Director Connor?
No, thank you for having me.
Have a great day.
You as well.
Next, we're gonna go over armory.
We're trying.
Next, we're gonna go over armory on line forty-four and forty-five. Yes, call for you.
Do we want Louis, is that even a question? Come on down, come on down. Happy to have you both.
So they are requesting for the armory building, fifteen thousand for roof repairs, and ten thousand for painting. Do you have any questions on those two projects?
Counselor Najin, did you have a question?
I actually don't, I was looking at the wrong line, thank you.
Counselor Chidham.
What happened to the floor, I thought that was going to be...
Floor's the library.
That's in the LCIP. The refinishing project?
These are just fund balance projects, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So seeing no questions, we'll move to library, so we'll keep Louis up here.
Joseph Houston, Library Director.
So they are requesting seven thousand four hundred for the roof replacement, a portion of the library, three thousand nine hundred for a fence for Park Street entrance, and eleven thousand for door, Park Street slash courtyard side. Any questions on those three progr- projects?
Before we do that, Director Turcot, can you just quickly explain these?
The, on, on the, on Park Street...
Just move the mic closer to you, it's fine.
On Park Street, there's an entrance near the corner of the building, and the door to the entry is falling apart, needs to be replaced. Often binds up, and, and it's a emergency exit, I'm pretty sure, so, it's a priority. In that same entry, there's a roof over that, that's just a one-story roof, small area, and that is a older tarmac gravel, probably thirty years old, has begun to leak. That's the roof replacement that we're talking about. And the fence, the fence issue was, it's all basically a black iron fence, like you see in most of the city areas, that would be used to help control people from hanging out, and Louis would ring down in the stairwell.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Herman.
Thank you, so this, this fence would be for that, that entry, not for the old main entrance on the, you know, with the steps?
No, not the main, not the grained entrance, it'd be the one off to the side.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Counselor Najin.
So, two of these are basically absolutely necessary, the, the fire escape, or the emergency exit, and the, and the damaged roof, right? The, the piece with the, with the fencing, I'm just trying to picture it, like, ultimately, you're just trying to keep people away from the, the lower portion of the building?
Yeah, so essentially, what this is, is it's a doorway under a roof that then descends down some stairs, there's a little landing, and then the door is off to the side. So what we have happen is because that is a nice out-of-sight place for people to hide, we have people that spend the night down there, we have people use the restroom down there, we have people that do drugs and leave syringes down there. So mostly, it is because this is an employee entrance and exit, it's a safety, you know, issue to, to keep people out of that area.
So, and, sorry, do, and do you have cameras in all?
We do not in the courtyard, but I did ask for one this year, it's in the MIS budget, so that's, this is all security enhancements, yeah, yeah.
Gotcha, I, I would think that cameras would also be, if not a deterrent, at least a tool that we can use, okay.
And, and this is also, for reference, this particular courtyard is the primary entrance and exit for employees, so my people are only coming in and out of this area ninety-nine percent of the time. And so it's an extra reason for me to want fewer people hanging about whenever possible.
So this fence will then, like, must have a gate unlocked then? Yeah, okay. Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor, that's where my question was going. If it's gonna be locked, let's make sure that the Police Department, Fire Department, and all those people, I've seen people put gates in for good intentions, and then people had to get in there who needed to get in there and could not. Thank you.
Counselor Chidham.
If this is an egress, we wanna make certain that it's a, it's a legitimate fire code egress, so a locked gate really doesn't function that way. Is, is there money in there to make sure that this complies with the state fire marshal's requirements?
Yes, like an egress door in a building, it'll have, it's similar to a crash bar or panic bar.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
We appreciate you designing this, following all city codes and ordinances. Councilor Najin.
So, you know, just as a point of reference, so we're looking at an $11,000 expense, covers the entire fencing piece? Is that correct? Do I have that right?
That's the door.
Oh, that's the door.
Door. The fence is the $3,900.
The fence is the $3,900. Okay. That's a lot less than... Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
Any other questions for library? Next, we'll move to economic development.
Thank you both.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nate Libby. I'm Director of Economic and Community Development.
Thank you for joining us.
So he's requesting $75,000 for the Bates Mill Reserve, $250,000 for the economic development loan pool, $52,000 for public arts, $230,000 for the Park and Canal Street alley stairs, $85,000 for the Park Street alley rehabilitation, and $235,714 for citywide wayfinding signs. Any questions on any of those?
Councilor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. I have questions, I have a couple. I guess I would start with the Park and Canal Street alley stairs. It's out of requirement this year. Can that be maybe moved out? I know there's a lot of stuff happening down there, but I went and looked, and it looks like we have nice stairs, still not going to connect or nothing. I just, you know, it's 10 cents for us on a tax side at $22,000 a pop. Is that something that could be pushed out?
So this has been a longstanding request of the business district occupants. The, I'll start with the Canal Street piece, and then I'll go to the Park Street piece. The Canal Street piece, they're wooden stairs. They're fairly uneven, so they create trip hazards. PD reports they're frequently called over to tend to folks who are unhoused, who've removed parts of the wooden structure to find shelter, and so they're called in to move people along. And then PW responds to repair the damage that was done. And so from a lighting perspective, an ease-of-egress perspective, a safety perspective, business district has been asking city to give some attention to this. And so we put that forward and combined it with the Canal Street project. The Canal Street alley stairs are not designed correctly. They're too shallow. So folks who are not familiar with a staircase often will take trips as they are navigating those stairs. Those stairs are not well lit. They're not particularly attractive. They're a main gateway for parking, for a lot of events, and for restaurants and others that their customers are parking and then making their way down to Lisbon Street. The two neighbors on either side of the stairs frequently call PD to tend to issues around folks who are gathering there, using substances. It's not well lit and creates some safety issues for employees and customers. So we packaged the two projects together. Those two alleyways connect Lisbon Street to parking assets. And so because they've been neglected for many years, we wanted to put the request forward this year.
I would also, sorry, Councilor Glant, are you?
Go ahead. We'll finish talking on this item, and then I'll go to my second item, if I could, or you won't?
No. Well, if I can just say something about the stairs really quick. So the parking, or the Park Street stairs, the railing is very suspect, and the stairs are chipped. They're long overdue for some money.
I'm not saying you don't need repairs. I just want to know if we couldn't wait a year. The second question is here...
Thank you, Councilor Glant. Please continue.
Your citywide wayfinding signs, is that something else that can be pushed out? I know we're really trying to promote the city, but we're also trying to promote our tax base.
Sure. The downtown business district has really been pummeled for several years in a row. It started with a pandemic and about 5,000 employees who visited the downtown business district daily, going away for a variety of reasons, whether it was work from home, financial institutions pulling their physical footprint out, those kinds of things. The shooting didn't help either. And so wayfinding has been on the list of the downtown business district's request for some time. Our current system is too small to be of any use or function to drivers. A lot of the information is becoming out of date. Part of the request is to also include signage on all of our parking garages. It's remarkable, the number of residents and folks from nearby who are not aware that parking garages are free after 6:00. They only cost a dollar an hour. The first hour is free, and they're free on the weekends. There's really no indication of any of those benefits to anybody who's visiting, for that amount of people who live here. And so part of the thinking is we need to better direct residents, customers, and folks from away to these parking assets. And then when they are directed there, not be scared away by having to, you know, pay Portland rates, for example, to park, which is scary. I think what our business district residents are telling us is the perception around town is that getting to downtown is hard. The perception is not the reality, but we have to work on changing that perception. And so the wayfinding system is part of that effort.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Really quick, didn't we go to two hours free? I could have swore we did.
First hour's free. We're going to be bringing a proposal to you in a couple of weeks that ties into this. But staff have been working, PD, Public Works, Economic Development Planning, and Admin and Marketing. We've been working on bringing forward to you a plan to revamp our parking system at a fairly low cost, but with a fairly significant positive change in how the public uses our parking system. I can give you more information now. I prefer to wait for the session that we're going to schedule with you to talk about those changes. But moving the needle forward on making it easier to park downtown is the goal, and I think you'll, I hope, be impressed with what we're going to bring to you.
We will wait. Thank you. Councilor Roy? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question I have is, with that Wayfair signage, exit 80, I'm telling you, we got the Ramada on there, and we got like Sure Stay Motel. We got nothing else. Is there a plan to maybe put some of that, like something on that sign so that people driving through on the interstate?
Yeah. The, that signage system is controlled by Main Turnpike Authority. And so they run a program to put businesses up on those signs. And there's a fee associated with it. It's something less than $10,000, I think, but, you know, more than $1,000, something like that. We've, I think in the last month, done some investigation on how to change what is on that sign system. But it would either require recruiting businesses who want to self-fund that advertisement, or figuring out a way for us to pay for it. And if we decide to pay for it, then we have to figure out how to sort of select just for attractions, which will be an interesting process. So it's something we can, I mean, something we're thinking about, have investigated. We haven't come up with a solution yet.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilor Herman.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion about the signage around parking. And I assume this will also include wayfinding signs to get to the parking garages, because I hear that fairly frequently, that people think there's no parking. They think it's really difficult. I think sometimes it's just a narrative that people are repeating, but oftentimes it is what they're experiencing, because they don't know where the parking garages are and how to get to them. So I assume these will include some directions to the parking garages as well.
Yeah. I think the thinking is that our existing signage is too small, it's not lit, and it's out of date. And so it doesn't really perform a useful function to residents, but importantly, visitors who don't know their way around. And so parking signs that are positioned strategically for all the major thoroughfares, the major collectors, and some of the important smaller streets that are large enough to be noticed and lit at nighttime, we think is important. And, you know, you have a number of examples of main communities that do that better than we do. We want to try to move Lewiston up to that higher standard.
Great. Thank you.
Councilor Najin.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On some of these pieces, from the TIF going forward, some of these pieces are actually going to be shifted over to the TIF as well. Am I correct? Like, as far as like public arts is concerned, and then also the $250,000 for the economic development loan pool. Was that kind of written into the TIF proposal?
Correct.
For future years?
All of the discussion here tonight is to try to relieve some impact to the tax rate. And so you are correct, those items were mentioned during our TIF discussions for any CEC. It's important to note that that project, as I laid it out, is coming online in phases, and the tax assessment date has a lag. So the project has another year of construction to go. We're going to have a small increment this first year that we're talking about tonight. The following year will be a substantial increment. We'll use some balance from the Walmart TIF to carry us through this year. But the full TIF is not going to provide that revenue that we've talked about for another year, and then it'll be a year more until you get to the full value.
Right. And I think what we're trying to get at here is the, so we've been, I guess, a perfect storm, right, between COVID and the divestment in the downtown spaces for offices, and kind of the lag in some of the development projects that we're now seeing that will come to fruition in the next year or two. And so there's a model where if we are not consistently supporting the downtown spaces, and that's not just in the economic development piece either, that's also, you know, other departments saying that these areas are important. Public Works keeps it clean. PD or other services make sure that incongruous uses aren't occurring, right? And so, you know, I know that we've been advocating, when I say we, you know, I was on the DLA board for a few years, and we've been advocating for a lot of these pieces that are in here. And I absolutely understand that the support has to be, it can't be a situation where we support it one year and we don't do it the next. It has to be a continual support, or else you'll never get any traction in order to rebuild that downtown economic development area. So I just want to name that. It's a continued effort by the city in both the funding piece and taking care of it like it actually matters, in order to, you know, realize fruits. That's, you know, the Main Street model is the same, no matter where you look at in Maine. Brunswick, Halliwell, Portland, they're all, it's a model that any community can follow. And so, you know, ultimately, you know, again, these pieces have been pushed back for years and years. And now we're in a situation where if we don't do something critical for downtown, it is getting kind of desperate for businesses down there, so.
Councilor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. Getting back to signage, and I'm not against it, so you know. But I would like to see a possible in the near future, that when you come off of 80, and I appreciate Councilor Roy talking about that, that when you come up, we have some kind of signage there that says, "City of Lewiston, next right down Lisbon Street," you know, "Museum, next right, library." Because they go down to Webster Street, and what happens is they get down, and then all of a sudden, well, they're going to head to Auburn. They don't come into town, because there's no direction out in that corner whatsoever to get anybody to come down Lisbon Street to get into all of our stuff, you know. And when I was in a previous position like this, we had businesses pay that would say, you know, whatever the business name was, it was all uniform, but there was like a little placate thing. So if somebody was looking for a restaurant, they'd see a name of a restaurant or something, you know, in that area. And I just think that's missing, because when you come off of 80, you really, unless you know the area, you don't really know where to go, whether it's Samar Park, whatever it is. So if it's not in this click, at some point, I think that'd be very beneficial for our community, for people to see that. Plus, it would keep them off my street of Webster, and I wouldn't have to see all those cars. So, just my thought.
Thank you, Councilor Glant. Councilor Chittam.
Thank you. These wayfinding...
Sorry, if I may. Visitors are always welcome to Lewiston, just so we're clear. Councilor Chittam.
Thank you. I was just going to say the opposite. These wayfinding signs are going to have QR codes on them that lead people to digital information and locations and so on.
So I just saw a mock-up the other day for what we're trying to do for an interim solution for the parking garages. We've included QR codes there, I think, for the places where pedestrians will interface. That makes sense. The challenge, though, is the current wayfind signs that we have are too small and too high up.
Right.
And so they need to be high for vehicle visibility. They need to be low to be able to access QR codes. But we could mention that if we get the funding, include that in our RFP.
Well, if they need to be high and they need to be low, they need to be bigger.
Fair point.
I am 127% in favor of repairing those stairs, both sets, the wooden ones and the decroded concrete ones. They're an embarrassment to the city, so I'm glad to see that happening and fully support it.
Yeah. In my mind, we need all these things to move our downtown forward and increase visitors, which will benefit the entire city of Lewiston. Councilor Najin.
What is the Bates Mill Reserve?
So as you know, we own the Bates Mill, number five. And this is a reserve to tend to emergent needs and controlling, keeping safe a 375,000 square foot unoccupied building.
So we had postponed a major roof repair based on a contract that Link Jeffers had worked out, where we were doing a repair that was going to last for four or five years.
So sorry to interject. The roof repair project has been completed.
Right.
And it was done about 25% of the estimated cost. There was, yeah.
Yeah. But it was only a temporary repair, from what I understand. Correct?
Yeah. I think the lifespan is something like eight years. It was not designed as a 40-year replacement.
I guess at some point, we probably want to just be informed of like what the running tally is for Bates Mill number five. Sorry. I guess at some point, we probably want to be informed of what the running tally is for Bates Mill number five, as far as, you know, we're looking at two years ago, spending $10 million to abate it or $10 million to tear it down, right? Even though there were some structural questions. And so having an update on that, I mean, it's a large structure in our city that we haven't had a solution for since 1990, so.
Sure. Director Roy can run that fairly easily. I think the developer who has an option agreement on the building has some time left to pull together a proposal. And I expect we'll have discussions with you, you know, in the next 12 months before we get to that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions for Director Libby? Director Libby, I think we're on the right track, making these public... I'll give you a second after me.
Thank you.
Making these public investments will, in my mind, certainly lead to private investment.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a final point to put this request in context. There's about 900,000 in requests here. Relative to what the private sector has invested in Lewiston each of the last four years, using permit data, it's about 80 million a year. And so if we were to match the private sector at 10% of what they're investing, I'd be asking for $8 million here. I'm asking for less than a million. So just want to give you that context. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Director Roy, how does the council, we're being, we've been here, coming up on two hours. Shall we take a short recess before we start the next round? All right. We will take a very brief recess, a few minutes here, and then we're going to get back at it. All right, we will take a very brief recess, a few minutes here, and then we're going to get back at it. Hello, and we're back. Counselors, thank you. Director Roy?
So next, we're going to start with Public Works. We're going to do the building at City Hall, which is on line four. So we're going back up to the top. So they're requesting $40,000 to replace part of the roof. And then for Oak Street Parking, they're requesting $17,120 for the parking garage signage upgrade. Along with, so you'll see that in three different parking garages, actually five, sorry. You'll see it in Oak Street on line 12. You'll see it on, I mean, on line five. On line six, you'll see it in Centerville. On line seven, you'll see it in Chestnut. On line nine, you'll see it on South Gateway. And on line 11, Lincoln Street Parking Garage. So this will be split between the five garages. And then on line eight, they're requesting $30,000 for the painting structure for the steel. And on line 10, they're requesting $35,000 for the painting structure on South Gate Parking Garage. Any questions on those projects?
Well, before we take all these questions, do either of you want to say anything about these items? Okay, Counselor Arman?
Thank you. Are these parking garage signage upgrades, are they the ones that Director Libby mentioned, but they're not included in the wayfinding sign line?
Right, it would be coordinated with the wayfinding sign.
Okay.
Yeah. And there are LED message boards that would be put over the entrances in hotspots for traffic.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Najin?
So just a quick question on your current ticketing equipment that's in there. So I've had a couple of instances where constituents have called and said, "I can't figure out how to reissue a ticket," because I guess apparently, like, it's a really small little like button that's not, there's no words or anything like that. And then also, like, it's only in English. And so like, I'm just wondering, like, will there be just something that we do in order to make it, like, with the signage piece, clearer to people who are using the parking garage? One, how to reissue a ticket, right? And then two, like, offer at least one other language, one or two other languages?
In the signage that we're talking about here in the fund balance, there'd be no room. That's one sign per garage, and that was the quoted price.
That's just an LED sign that basically says parking?
But I do agree, there's probably room in another budget for whether it's language signs or more detailed information at each of the gates.
Thank you.
Counselor Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, two-part question. So we're going to give $250,000 for one sign and $90,000 for this, for a total of $340,000 for signs. Am I reading that correctly? So that's what it's going to come down to. Now these, clarify my LCIP program. Couldn't that be grouped as one item under the LCIP, under bonding, and we could free up $340,000K out of the budget?
So-
So one-time buy?
The parking signage is something we wouldn't, it's only about $85,000. So it's something you wouldn't tend to bond because you're going to pay interest on at least five years.
Right.
On $85,000.
But if I rose his $250,000 to $340,000 and took it out of their budget as just being signage, then I have $340,000 as an ICIP item that would make sense maybe to bond, to free up, again, we're talking at $22,000 a pop. You know, that's, what, 30 cents on our tax bill?
Right, so signage, one sign costs $17,120. So technically, that's not considered an asset. You're looking at assets up and above that. It's ultimately your decision. When the city administrator and myself are looking at the LCIP, we're trying to get it down to get closer to that 80% rule, is what we're trying to do. So if we're adding it back, then you're going to have more to look at for removal.
Right, and you know my feeling on the 80% is we don't have enough bond money. We don't have enough operation money. At some point, we have to figure out what's more important. And I think the 80% rule, in my personal opinion, and we'll have a discussion at some point, needs to go away. It's just an old, equated system. It doesn't work in Lewiston for us to be able to pay our bills. I'm just tossing that out there as an option. It would seem to me if I could move it out of there and take it away from the taxpayers this year, I would prefer to see that. Thank you.
So just a reminder, anything that's in fund balance isn't included in the tax rate calculation.
Counselor Saul, did you have something?
The City Hall roof, was that in last year's, was that requested last year as well?
Yes.
Is it just a part of the roof?
Yeah, it's one section, and the price to replace it has doubled over the past year.
So we really don't want to wait another year?
No, we really shouldn't. We have bare wooden spots.
Can we structurally wait another year? Just financially, it's-
I would say no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Further questions?
So next, we'll move to go down a highway on line 21 for resurfacing $2,500 per street paving. $32,000 for replacement of guardrails. $20,000 for replacement of guardrails, Switzerland Road, 200 feet. And then for street lighting, construction materials on line 24 of $60,000. This is a main DOT project. Any questions on any of those items?
Counselor Chittam?
Thank you. What's the criterion for replacing guardrail?
Step right up.
Deputy Director Bates will answer this question.
So the replacement that you see there is from, just damages from accidents. So we don't have like a wear and tear type of replacement program. This is strictly just from accidents. So we have some hit and runs that we have to have coverage for, that we can't get, you know, any insurance money from, but we do have some credits from some accidents for insurance.
So how do you find out about this, that a guardrail has been hit?
We generally hear about it because we have a traffic division that goes in and sets up barricades and such, or we get a call from the police department, and we get a police report. And we have a staff person who manages all of our claims.
All right, so if the guardrail has been uprooted and there's obvious problems, that's clear. But if it's been dented and the posts have been dislodged, as the one on No Name Pond Road has been, is that, does that qualify for replacement? Would that be put on the list, or do you say, no, it's, somebody needs to go evaluate that, I think?
That's right. If it's brought to our attention, we would have someone go out there and evaluate it.
Okay.
And get a price. The challenge we have now is getting companies to do the work. That's been a real challenge.
Okay, well, I would put on your radar then that sometime within the past six months, somebody has hit the guardrail in front of my house on No Name Pond Road.
I can check our concerns and see if that's already on there, but if it's not, we'll put it on there.
Thank you.
Counselor Saul?
The street lighting, is that for, what streets is that, is it throughout the city? Because is it like literal streetlights?
So this project is specific to the main DOT project. We have our own electrical network powering some of our streetlights. Not all of them are on a CMP grid. It's our own City of Lewiston streetlight grid. On Bates Street, on the north side, next to the gas station, we have a pole that needs to be moved back out of the new sidewalks and the ADA ramps. And that pole has an underground conduit that goes underneath Main Street to the south side of Main Street on Bates, there where it rises. That conduit needs to be changed out. That feed that goes through there is shorted out, and right now, we're running an aerial. So we need to move the pole, plus this is our opportunity to change that underground conduit and replace it, so we're not dealing with a temporary aerial line that we ran.
Okay, is that affecting the lights that seem to keep going out on Main and Sabates?
I don't believe that's the case.
Okay.
Dan Rodrick, our electrical superintendent, isn't here, but based what Erica Kidd, I just released, because we have done the utility piece as well. But I believe that's, they're trying to troubleshoot that right now, a possible short. They had some transformer issues and other things, so that should be, they're looking into it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Najin?
This is a little bit, it's not off track, but it's not exactly this. My question is, we have the old switches, right, that we're updating as far as the streetlights are concerned. Is there a possibility to make certain streetlights brighter than others? And what I'm asking is basically, Main Street in particular, right, generally tends to have the same lighting as the neighborhoods behind it. And is there a way to make the Main Street corridor brighter, right? Or any corridor brighter currently?
So I'll speak to the whole system. I think we have some remaining lights to transfer, a very small group to go to LEDs. Most of the system is all LEDs. At the time, we chose to just replace the fixtures. So we have LEDs. There is no smart grid technology to be able to increase or decrease. So right now, it's an on-off based on the photocell, and we're powering the circuits or powering the visual fixture with not that enhanced system where if there's an evacuation route, if there's something going on, we could increase or change the brightness of it. So, short answer, no, we don't have that ability to. Adding that technology in is possible with the fixtures we have. They just haven't been networked or integrated.
Counselor Arman?
Along those lines, so you could potentially make a certain corridor brighter, but you'd have to replace the fixtures with a brighter fixture, right?
Correct. When we started doing the switch over to the LEDs, we actually looked at a piece of Lincoln Street and put a certain color fixture there to get that comparison with some of the other neighborhoods. So we haven't deployed that technology. The fixtures we have can do that, but we need to actually make each of the heads network, which is a radio-based system.
Okay, thanks.
The system that we provided allows that. We do not have those modules on the units.
Counselor Najin, did you have?
Yeah, just really quickly. So on the Main Street redevelopment with MDOT, right? Or any of these pieces where it's a state road, and we know that there are high crash rates for pedestrians? It might be something to talk about MDOT, about like caution sharing for those pieces for future. Ultimately, you can't see very well pedestrians on the sidewalk and definitely not when they dart out at certain times of the day because of how the lighting works, you know? And so, you know, I'm just looking at ways to kind of reduce that.
Absolutely can have that discussion. I know that our crosswalks with rapid flashing beacons, those have a new standard for pedestrian lighting. So there's been a lot of work done at the national standard levels. We have federal highway and coming down. So DOT has embraced that, and we'll be incorporating some of those. So we'll ask more questions on how we can better light all intersections that are being touched.
Counselor Glenn?
Going to continue to beat this dead horse. So you're saying the street paving cannot be put into the LCIP?
So in order to reduce the LCIP, because originally, they requested, if you remember when we went over the LCIP for Public Works, originally, they requested like 5.2 million, I believe. In order to try to get the LCIP down closer to the 80% rule, we looked at what was left over from prior bonding and what was left over from fund balance. And there was, I believe, considerably a large amount. I know that there- I know that they're starting their projects this year. So we removed a portion from that. They put it into their operating, and then I removed it and put it to the fund balance to be covered.
So I guess my, here's where I'm trying to go with this. And everybody keeps saying, you know, I understand fund balance doesn't affect the tax rate. However, if I lower fund balance, I can take things that are, we are being taxed on and move to fund balance. Is there any items? Have you moved every item from there so there's nothing we can gain? That's the part I don't understand is, you know, we can't move, I mean, fund balance is limited what you can do?
It's, it's good to use fund balance for one-time items. If you start using it to cover items that you're going to need every year, then you're going to have a cliff coming up. Because you're not going to have those funds to cover, and you're going to have a certain amount now to cover on top of that.
And I understand that, but if we use it one time this year to help us lower our tax rate and go back to normal next year, the cliff won't be there. If you use it every year, your cliff will show up. But in reality, I would like to think that we would have enough flexibility that the one-year slide wouldn't necessarily put us in a situation that you're concerned about. And I understand the concern, but again, I'm trying to find money to help the tax rate. And if I can move it into, and we're talking eighty percent, we may agree to go ninety. How much room does that give us to move things over? Okay, that's the whole, we haven't determined that as a body, which is kind of sad, because then we would know if we had some things that could be moved in over here without worrying about the eighty percent, or whatever else we have to do to make this work. So for me, if I had to move a few things out into this, this year, knowing that it's only a this-year thing, and had to come back next year, and I get lower my tax rate or get somehow better for the taxpayers, I would like to consider doing that.
So going over all these projects, these are not, you don't have to do these projects, and that's why we're going over every single line. So you may remove some of these items and free up some of that fund balance to use, if you'd like, for some of the capital as we did last year.
So that's where I roll back to my parking garage signs. If we grouped all of them together as one, we would clear up three hundred and forty thousand dollars off of here that we could take from the taxpayer's side. Would that not be, how that would work?
If you mean bond it?
Yes.
It would move to, when we bond it in two years, to the principal and the interest.
I do understand that, but I, we're trying to kick a can down the road a little bit here, and I'm more concerned with three dollars plus taxes this year and work out as we move forward than not just, you know, do the other side of the thing. You know, quite frankly, that's kind of where my mind goes with what we're trying to do here. How far do we have to go? That we're going to get three dollars this year, three dollars next year? We don't have enough bonded money to cover, we already discussed that, our operating budget for many more years if we don't do something. So at some point, something's going to give, or we're not going to have a town to pay our bills. In my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Glant. Yeah, so there's a few things at work here. With the fund balance, what are, if all of these projects were approved, where does that leave us for fund balance? Is that at ten percent right now? Or where do you have us at, Director Roy?
That would bring us right down to ten percent. It would be, we have about eight thousand more dollars, and then it would be at ten percent.
Okay, and we really try to keep it between eight and twelve, right?
Correct.
And then ten just is where, you know, kind of middle where we try to shoot for. Yeah, so we have a couple more. And the two percent, what is that in dollars?
For the...
Fund balance. If we went from ten to eight percent, that two percent difference, what is, like, what number is that? And then to add to that, if we're talking about LCIP, those projects are bonded, correct, Director Roy? Or Director Roy? We respect you a lot.
The LCIP would be bonded.
Correct.
The fund balance would not.
Yeah, and I realize there's a lot of hand wringing about the eighty percent rule, and we keep talking about it, and you know, that's great, but we've, we can vote with five of us to overrule that as we have in many years past.
So if you wanted to get down to... So to get down to eight percent, which I don't recommend, it would be ten million point three, ten point three million.
And where are we at right now?
We are currently at the end of, because we always use the end of our audited year for twenty-four. We had undesignated twenty-four million one.
Right, okay, so the difference between ten and eight percent is what number? What I'm trying to understand is how much extra we would have if we took it down to eight.
So if you took it down to eight, because ten percent would be six point nine. If you took it down to eight, you would use ten point three. So you'd have three point four more million to use.
Okay, so there's a little bit of wiggle room there, counselors. Just food for thought. Counselor Najin, did you have something?
I did, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had a couple of discussions, Director Gagne, concerning paving in general. And I just want to reiterate, when we look at Public Works, they touch everything in the city. And ultimately, our capacity, it seems, to do some jobs has been reduced over time. And so we're at the mercy of contractors for a lot of our work. And when I say a lot of our work, you know, our paving, for instance. We don't even pay for small jobs at this point. And my question is, at what point in time do we build out some capacity within our organization in order to, one, decide how quickly or slowly we're going to actually do some of the maintenance pieces that we're currently dependent on LCIP and bonding for? And then, two, like, what, when does that actually become a return on investment? And I don't expect you to answer this right this second. I kind of, I had proposed about the sidewalks, you know? You have a five-man crew that just pours concrete, builds sidewalks, replaces sidewalks. We could then say that our sidewalk plan is on a five-year schedule, right? Or whatever it might be. It's the same argument that I would put forward with when we go to the Finance Committee to say, hey, we need somebody to excavate, right? Like, if we had somebody on the Public Works team that was comfortable with excavation or putting in, you know, retaining walls, any of these pieces, even if there's a team, we wouldn't have to budget those things out to contractors. And I don't know if the model right now is more cost, you know, cost, if the cost savings is better to continue to give this to, in some cases, there will be only one company that bids on the work versus building out some of those programs ourselves. And so if you have any thoughts on that, I'd love to hear it.
So we'll definitely look at that in more detail. I don't have an answer for you tonight, and I appreciate the question. I would say thirty years ago, we had that capacity. And just through attrition, retirements, we have some good talent coming in onboard. We have some good senior staff. We're training new people coming in that don't have their CDLs. So we have lost a lot of, a lot of talent. I think right now, where we're at, we are minimally sized to take care of, you know, plowing a storm is difficult. So to get into that capacity, we would be adding staff. So I will, I will look at what, how that can offset and talk with admin and as well as Director Roy and see what, but this year's budget presented to you, we chose not to ask for any new staff. But we will look at that and see, you know, some of our small jobs. Because I know we have people that want to do that. Right now, we're trying to take care of a lot of regulatory pieces that we've talked about in the past. Everybody sees the sweeping that we're doing and the cleanup that we're doing. That's a regulatory component. That's MS four, that's all of that, not just beautification. You know, the litter pickup, all of that. It's a, it's a regulatory compliance piece in addition to beautifying the city. So we'll put some effort to it and try to get an answer back to you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I mean, ultimately, we run a snow crew, and we're still contracting out to have our parking garages buyout. And it's just like, how, you know, at what point do we, do we actually develop the staff in-house to do that stuff?
And in those scenarios, we, we are trying to field two shifts depending on, like, we got lucky this year, to be honest with you. Extending past our B team, our B team, our units are cut in half. So if it was a three-day storm, where we were looking at some significant issues with the roads, to have dedicated staff, like some of our contractors are at the parking garages, it's kind of treating it as a shopping area where we know people are coming to downtown businesses. Those contractors are going in there on a much more regular basis than we would get there with our regular crew. So it would take a dedicated staff to just allocate for that type of piece. So we would definitely consider those ideas and try to bring forth some options or what it would cost and how's our cost comparison with bidding it out.
Thank you.
Yep.
And to increase our paving capacity beyond staff, we would probably also need additional or more equipment? Or different equipment?
Absolutely. Right now, our crews are taking care of prepping for paving projects. Like, utilities are not included in DOT projects. We do some repairs on storm drains and paving aprons and things like that. Anything that, we do not have a paver. We have some milling ability to transition, and we do handwork getting, and you know, we patch a lot of potholes and we do some temporary repairs like that. But we do have some, some people that came from paving crews and those. So I think we have talent onboard, and right now, we are spread thins. But we would need equipment as well, and we will include that in whatever proposal or cost analysis that we look at.
Yeah, and of course, not everything that we contract out for, would we be able to do cheaper in-house?
We cannot do it all. Previous directors, I know, you know, we have the ability or talent, but we do not have the amount of just sheer personnel hours to get all the work done that we're using with outside contractors. So we would, we would still be contracting out, but I think to Counselors Najin's point, we did talk, you know, some of these sidewalks that we're putting these big, big jobs out, and we're not reducing our inventory of bad sidewalks very aggressively. So having some in-house talent might be able to do that at a lower rate and hit more of these areas instead of just constantly trying to put things out to bid.
Further, further questions?
Next is the waste disposal, line twenty-five and twenty-six. Requesting fifteen thousand for the fifty cubic yard roll-off container and sixty-two thousand five hundred for curbside waste recycling collection signs. Any questions on those two?
Counselor Herman.
Thank you. The, the curbside waste and recycling signs, I think those are related to the new system that's, that's coming onboard. And I was just curious where those signs would be.
Correct, so the, my understanding, I'm going to let Deputy Bates correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll take a stab at it. So our contractor will be putting up signs and notifications and public information. However, where we are on the streets that during collection day, well, there'll be no parking here so that those areas can all have the trash, the bins out at curbside for easy collection. Those are the signs that are in this budget item. So this is an amount, I think it was five hundred signs we planned on and signposts and installation and all of that, that PW's, that we're not contracting that out. But that's something that we, we need to get out there in cooperation with the extra collection effort.
So this is more for the, the parking regulation signs that, you know, things might need to be shifted?
And there's a lot more process that we're not even talking about as far as that, because PD needs to sign off, we need admin, we need public outreach before we change parking ordinances and all of that. So this is just getting the actual signs if we get to that point to be able to, to be able to have that process and do implementation.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Najin.
And when's the rollout for that?
I think twenty-six.
So it would be this fiscal year?
Correct. So we're looking, starting to deploy in the easier sections of town in spring of twenty-six. And then as we, working on, as we have success build on that and get into the tougher areas with the parking issues and one-way roads.
And at this point, we don't have any delay on the bins or anything like that?
We are not hearing anything back.
Okay.
So we think everything's on track with how they've given us as a schedule.
Next, we're going to go over open spaces on line twenty-seven down to line thirty-three. They're requesting thirty-seven thousand five hundred for pickleball court sound barrier and storage. Sixteen thousand for a gazebo at Ricker Park. Thirty-one thousand three fifty for the GPS field lining robot. Eight thousand for large Christmas tree canvas cover. Ten thousand for Christmas ground display. Ten thousand for some paint gateway landscaping. And five thousand for landscaping at Cedar Street Traffic Island. Any questions on those projects?
Have we, yes, thank you for joining us again, Deputy Director Bates. So have we been getting complaints about sound at the pickleball courts from, from the fire department, or?
No, local residents.
Right, okay. Further questions from the counselor? Counselor Chittam.
We talked about this robotic line painter last year. It was in the Capitol plant, if I'm not mistaken. Did we determine last year that this was going to be a cost-effective investment? That we would spend less money painting lines with a machine than we would by doing it manually?
Yes, that's, that's correct. I can give an example of that. So if we have, currently, we have like a three-man crew that will take care of football field. That's our most intense field lining is for football. So three people all day long. This robot would enable us to have two free individuals to do work elsewhere so that would only be one person there. And that person would also be able to do something else in that area other than just to watch the robot.
So do we have a return on investment or a payback, payback period?
Again, I have that cost analysis done. I just don't have it here this evening, but I can get that to you.
Please, thank you.
Counselor Glant.
I had the opportunity in Boston last week to see one of these in action, and they're awesome. I think we should have it, because this guy was just walking around a field and doing nothing, and the thing would go, and it'd stop. He'd go over there and program it with his little hand thing, and he'd walk off. He'd drive to another spot, and he'd take off. And I was up in the hospital looking down at it, and I'm going like, this is going to be the coolest thing ever. So in having run a rec department where we had a line of field, I'm positive what I see there, two people's manpower, you know, you put ten games in, include soccer and everything else goes and fine, it'll pay for itself easily.
I think we could save a lot of staff time if we have our new volunteer here trained on this robot and, you know, Counselor Glant could just take it away. Yes, Counselor Herman.
Yes, I had a question about the two, the Christmas tree cover and the Christmas ground display. If you could just explain what those entail?
So we generally get a tree donated every year from an area resident, and we have to cover that tree in order to transport it. The cover is shredded. We have never, I've been with the department for, since two thousand and seven, we haven't replaced it. So it's in dire need of replacement. What was the other item, sorry?
The Christmas ground display.
The Christmas ground display is just in addition to our Christmas lights. We, I'm not sure if you all noticed, but we did do one ground display this year on Hewlett Square. It was Santa Claus with the reindeer flying up. So we would love to be able to continue this throughout the city in various areas and then move them so that the same area isn't seeing the same ground lighting. And it does save us time versus doing bucket truck work. However, the downtown loves the tree lights, so again, we're being asked to do more. We love, we would love to do more, it's just a staffing issue.
Thank you.
Counselor Chittam.
Christmas has become a secular holiday, but it has roots in Christianity. Do we have similar displays for other religions that are represented here in Lewiston?
We don't have a permanent one. When they, when they have their holiday event, we have a menorah that is donated by an area synagogue, and we pick, we pick it up and we display that for that event.
I'm thinking specifically about Islam. Do we have anything for them? Or does Islam recognize any kind of overt displays? I don't know the answer to that.
I'm sorry, I have the information.
Further questions?
So next, we'll move...
Counselor Chittam, did you have something else?
Can this field painter do parking lots too?
That's a good question. I can ask about that. I, I haven't heard that it can. But, uh, one really neat thing is, um, if we had like a, we have several major events. Um, it will do all types of stencil work. So if we had a, an event that had a sponsor that wanted their branding in the middle of a field, it would do that. And we could charge for that.
So we could then lay out, uh, Smart Paint Park for the balloon festival?
We certainly could.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes, Counselor Nagin?
Following up on that, um, our parks and usage in our parks, like we wanna obviously get, uh, more programming from the rec department in, in parks. Um, I think that most people are very supportive of that. We're thinking that this robot would also be able to be used at McGraw, at Pettingill, um, at other parks, correct?
Any, any natural or artificial turf it will do? Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Since we're talking about this robot, uh, obviously at, um, uh, the field at the high school, it's, you know, it's pretty flat and uniform. McGraw is not, uh, quite, uh, that way, but, uh, so is it like, i- it would be fine in any kind of, uh, uh, kind of field.
Yeah. So the field at McGraw, you're talking about Auburn Savings Recreation?
Yes, yes.
It's a beautiful field. It is, it is flat. It's, it's perfect. It's very in good condition.
Uh, I take back what I said. Further questions?
Next, we're gonna go to municipal garage on line thirty-four to forty-one. So vehicle request, a million five eighty-four thousand is on page seventy-six of your LCIP book. Has a list of all of those vehicles that he is requesting. And then twenty-one thousand for Conax storage container. Five thousand five hundred for spill container pallets. One thousand four hundred for key cabinets and tag systems. Two thousand two hundred and fifty for cab over tailgate lock system. Four thousand five hundred for corrosion protection application for equipment. Three thousand nine hundred for portable hydraulic power pack. Four thousand eight hundred for pallet rack comp, um, component to finish the cold storage. And that is municipal garage. Any questions on any of those?
Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. The trash packer truck, can you describe what that looks like?
Um, you've probably seen it, oh, one over at Bates College. It's a small trash truck.
That's what it is.
Right now, the, all the barrels around the city that we take care of, the guy has to lift them into the back of a dump truck. And we've had multiple back injuries over the years. So this would be, you know, much lower, like, you know, typical trash truck. Then we can pack the trash and so he could stay out there longer. Now the trash is just thrown in the back. When it's full, he has to go dump it constantly, so.
All right. I was just curious. Thank you.
Counselor Saul?
Can you, um, explain to me what a, I hope I say it right, oh, wax oil? Corrosion protection application equipment is?
It's a rust-proofing process. Right now, we use what they call fluid film. The problem with fluid film, it's, you have to do it every year. The wax oil lasts for, I mean, people say it'll last for five, six, seven years. I know some of the other public works have done tests on it and it's, it holds up much better than what the fluid film does.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions on that. We're gonna move to public works building on line forty-two and forty-three. They're requesting seventeen thousand five hundred. That line says fire separation wall design. It actually should say HVAC pump replacement. And then twenty thousand for the fire separation wall design. Any questions on those two for public works building?
This is for over at Adams Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I just asked if it was for over at Adams Avenue. Not calling you any names. Counselor Herman?
Thank you. Um, I know we've had the, the fire separation wall on here for at least a couple of years. With the, with the anticipated move to, uh, you know, to building a larger center. I assume we'll, is there, is there sort of a long-term plan for that current building? That would still require that separation wall? Or is that something that we could, um, potentially put off? Or is the new facility so far in the future that we should still do this now?
Well, not sure how good my crystal ball is, but I'll give you where, where I think we're at. Considering that we asked for no additional staff, we're trying to maintain all of our basic services. I think it's optimistic to think that we would, we would have a referendum pass. I think there's also challenges to be able to build it and the time schedule that's there. So I think the phasing is, is really important. We're still working through with the architect now and, and looking at initial phases on what would be brought over. So we're looking at a multiple, multiple year, even if the economy was great and, and we got the funding. So the existing conditions in, in the municipal garage, that firewall actually separates the municipal garage from the office space. And that wall is not adequate. And it is a, you know, a wooden trust in part of the structure as well. So, uh, if something were to happen, we, now we do have a fire alarm sys, uh, system. We do have fire suppression that was there with sprinklers. Uh, this, this would hopefully avoid losing the whole building and give time for people in the admin building to get out. So I see us there for the next several years. If the referendum were to pass and the economy's going great, I, I still, we need time to build it. So realistically, three to five years is something before I see kind of admin moving into that space. We've talked about the transition piece. If the, if the, uh, vehicle wash is approved and, and we build that, then I see different parts of fleet moving over there and the municipal garage moving over at that point. So in the interim piece, this is, this is what we're looking, looking at for life safety really.
Okay, thanks.
So next we'll move to line fifty-five, which is the airport. This is on page fifteen of the LCIP. Requesting seventy-eight thousand five hundred for the CDS tee hanger, building, apron and taxi lane. So, um, the, the, there's more detail on this project on that page.
And would you be able to answer questions about this, Counselor Chittam?
Not without some bias.
Fair enough. Uh, Counselor Herman, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'd, well, I just, more of a comment. I had, I just wanted to note that on that page fifteen in the LCIP book, the, the ask from us is seventy-eight thousand five hundred, but it would bring in about three point four million in federal funds. That, that we would realize if we allocate this.
Counselor Chittam, yes?
I'd like to explain my remark. I think that in concept, this is a wonderful idea. I just have some severe reservations about the, uh, plans and the construction of that tee hanger itself. It was, uh, not designed for, uh, Maine winters. I think that the, the fact that seventy-eight thousand will bring in a lot of federal money i- is one of the main reasons that I'm not totally opposed to this. But I am concerned about, uh, the quality of construction. So I think it's a wise investment, but I do want to caution everyone concerned that those plans need to be looked at very carefully.
Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. It kind of brings a question up. Any money we give to anyone that's tied to federal or state that doesn't come in, do we get that back?
So what happens on any of the projects that we give to, um, are in governmental? If they are not used, usually another project and it'll come forth before the council for approval for reallocating to that other project. If not, then it would come back if the council requests that it come back to this, to the fund balance. Then it would come back to the fund balance. This project is for, um, as Counselor Chittam mentioned. When the bid went out, um, one of our board members just had concerns because there was no insulation in the roof. And I believe that they, he will be working with the company that we, um, hired for the engineer piece. And I'm hoping that all of those changes that he is requesting will be put forth before the actual project will be done. The plan is to build the tee hanger and build the furthest one along with the apron and the taxi lane. So that down the road, um, when individuals wanna build their own, which we would then lease the land to them and they would build their own, that that taxi lane would already be prepared and done. And it would be an easier sell for them to build that. But I do know that, um, the other board member will be, uh, reading the document with the engineering company. And hopefully those changes will be made before the construction.
I was just curious, you know, with all this, things going on everywhere, there's a lot of things being canceled left and right. Was we seen with the police department. So I just don't wanna be putting money out there and just having it sit in limbo. Uh, well, we can't get it back to use it for maybe something we need here in the city. And that's why my question was directed that way.
Right. So those funds actually stay with us. We don't just pay it out to them. So they have to, when they do the expense, they have to submit the invoice to us and then we pay it out. So the money stays with us. So if the project doesn't get done, um, the council can request those funds to go back into the fund balance.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Saul?
I apologize if you just answered this. Uh, a timeframe for this project to be done, are they talk, like, with two years, a year?
So the engineer, um, put out the bid. They are reviewing all of the bids, I believe. And then they have to look at the timeframe. I'm, I can't remember off my top of my head of how long before it would actually start.
Well, my question, my real question is, so I don't wanna revive a dead horse. The contract that we have with the airport is up in twenty-twenty-seven? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, Administrator O'Malley, I think you were talking about the tax sharing agreement.
Right, I think there's some confusion. It's more, it's the tax sharing agreement. But we still own the airport.
We'll still be.
So the inter-local agreement, we still own that. So we're talking about the area outside the airport where we get tax money from. That's gonna be up, I think it's twenty-twenty-seven or twenty-twenty-nine.
I think it's twenty-twenty-nine.
Twenty-twenty-nine, but we still own the airport. So even after that tax sharing agreement is up, that's still our airport.
I'm not sure you're completely correct.
I would disagree, Counselor Saul, it's all right.
I just, I've read that so many times and it is confusing, so I, thank you for that.
Airport, the park, that's the, the land around there, the outside of it. And that's back in whatever it was, nineteen seventy, whatever, when that was built. Both cities contributed money to build the, the utilities, the, the power, all that stuff there. And that's where that agreement was set up for the fifty years for us to get the, or tax. But the airport stays ours, along with Auburn.
I still don't support the project, but.
I, I totally understand, but I just want you to be clear that so when they talk about, and Counselor, um, Chittam is our city council representative to the, the airport board. So they would have a better idea and, you know, Director Roy is the treasurer. That's why she's able to explain so much. Um, in terms of what do we wanna do to make that airport so it's positive and we're, we're not supplying money to it? Um, that would be great if they were in the black and they were making money. But in, you know, four years or three and a half years, we're not gonna be getting that tax, you know, that tax money anymore.
I just kinda feel like they came back to us because the last hanger that they built.
I'm not gonna say, I'm not saying I'm for this or against this. That's what I rely on our city council rep for.
I just don't want them to come back in five years and tell us they need to change the policy because this hanger shit the bed.
Counselors, if we can watch our language, please. It's very unlikely, but there could be kids watching. We could be putting some toddler to sleep right now. Uh, a- anything further, Administrator O'Malley?
That was it.
Counselor, uh, Saul, did you have anything further?
No, that was my question.
Okay, and, um, and without, uh, there's a lot of work there, but yes, the airport park and the airport are two totally separate things. And then there was a very, you know, that hanger was built for, uh, Lus Hanzza Technic, uh, for a very special project. It's, it's, yeah, there, there's a lot of work there. They're, uh, not the same. Uh, Counselor Nagin?
On a related note, you had mentioned that we have allocated funds for inter, um, local agreements that, um, we hold on to and don't expend until the project's complete, correct? We don't actually pay that money forward until the project's gonna complete?
Correct. So we, we keep that in our fund, so it receives our interest. And only reimburse with proof of, I make them show me proof of an invoice and a check. And then they get their, their portion.
But that, so it just shows us like basically a debit line or, or a portion that is accounted for that's not part of the fund balance, right? But, but is, well, it is part of the fund balance, but it's not part of our operating revenue, we would say.
Correct.
So my question, since you brought that up, is do we have, uh, a, a list of, of all the expenditures that we have that have not been spent, um, for all of our inter-municipal agreements?
I can email that.
Okay, I would love to see it.
I actually have it, 'cause I keep track of what was, um, what was authorized for bond projects. What's spent, what's encumbered, what's left over. And then if it's transferred, um, and then I have the fund balance projects down below. I can email that out to you.
And do we ever, for instance, like, let's say we allocate something in two thousand and twenty, right? And the project is still not started at this point. Do we ever claw that back or do we leave it sitting there?
I know that the airport manager, um, Levante, is looking at some of the projects. And you'll see on the, on the list of what, uh, most of the older projects have been taken care of. But the prior airport manager wasn't, um, doing the projects. And some of them that he requested don't work anymore for the airport. So I know Jonathan's looking at what he can use and come back to council as we did the last portion to get projects that are needed done.
I was thinking about all, not just the airport, but all of our, uh, infrastructure that, that we, that we hold inter-local agreements on. I'm just wondering how much money is outstanding that we haven't like maybe reviewed over like four or five years? Just as a thought, talking about tight budgets.
So next is the transit, which is on page twenty-seven of your LCIP book. This is every year, um, a request of fifty thousand for the buses. So this is another account and I can get you the remain in balance, um, on what we have for prior years. Because it carries forward every year if not used. So that the time comes when he needs to purchase a bus, that he has those funds. So I can get you that balance along with the airport. Any questions on buses? And then on line fifty-seven is the workers' comp. This is the two hundred thousand dollars to go to the reserve to bring us back closer to what our liability is. And then on line fifty-eight is the office equipment for twenty thousand. This is to replace, um, desk and chairs. For the most part, we've been, uh, replacing the chairs, uh, 'cause they're getting old. Now we're starting to replace desks just because of the ergonomics. So we use this fund when we receive a request for a desk because it's not ergonomically correct. And going forward, we've been looking at just purchasing a stand-up sit-down. That way they have that option along with the fact that it's ergonomically for them. And it seems to be working out. A lot of the, the newer, um, desks are working out really well for people to stand up and sit down during the day. Any questions on those items? So that concludes our fund balance. And I just wanted to mention, I put on your desk or your space a new, um, LCIP from page thirty-four. The nine-one-one center will no longer need the full portion. With what you guys reallocated from the radios along with, um, four hundred thousand will be sufficient enough to replace, um, their facility. They're looking at a different.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Administrator O'Malley.
I could expound on that a little bit. I met with Phil Crowell from Auburn this morning, or this afternoon, and they have a new plan. I know several, a couple of you were not a big fan of 85 Park Street, where we were going to have to bond about 1.2 million dollars. They are recommending that they use the space that the police department is currently occupying over at Auburn City Hall and move the 911 dispatch center in there. He's going to be able to move out some of the detectives when they, and stop moving in 911 center, they've had an architect walk through there. So the money that we allocated for the architect, or architect to do the work, and if I epoxiate, will just pivot and go over to the Auburn City Hall, where we're looking at saving, you know, significant amount of money. Would I like to have the 911 center here in Lewiston? I would, but with the savings of a million dollars, I really don't have an argument against that. So that was why we're, we're reducing that quite a bit, because of the, the last minute that came from Auburn, that move them into the space that the police department occupy at Auburn City Hall.
Thank you. Anything further?
And then my, my goal now was, if that goes through, Auburn was having a, a meeting tonight as well, is to put 85 Park Street up for sale and see if somebody wants it.
Counselor Najin.
I was just going to thank you so very much, Administrator O'Malley. I greatly appreciate it.
When I heard this news, I knew it would make you night, Counselor.
Thank you.
Did someone have their hand up over here?
I was just cheering, and I'd jump up and down and do hand flips if I could. I'm too old.
You look fabulous, Counselor Chinam.
And then the other change was the 219,772 that you see in the other source for the ladder. This was originally put aside for the purchase of the land for the new fire station. Due to the federal funding that they got from HUD, they are using that portion to pay for the land. So that frees up this amount, which I'm just requesting that it goes to ladder, it doesn't need to go to that project, but I just put it under there, you guys can request it to be used for a different project. But those are the two changes from that. And then on your next sheet, I gave you a breakout, because originally I had done that breakout earlier at the amounts, that show the 95%, the 80%, 85, and 90, and 95% for the bonding.
Okay. Anything further, Director Roy? What I'd like to do at this point, since we talked about fund balance most of the night, if we could hear from counselors about their concerns, if any, about any of these items, quickly determine if there's consensus around those concerns, and then kind of take it from there. I'd just like to, Counselor Glant, are you still, yeah, okay. And, yeah, do you, do you have any concerns about any of the fund balance items?
I guess my concerns, as I spoke earlier, is I'd like to know what can be moved, if possible, into the bond side and free up space for some things from the tax side to come over. So I made a list, I'm going to email to the director tomorrow, things I'd like her to consider looking at, to see if those are possible items. I understand what her concern is, but I'm thinking for one year, and I'd use an example, if we move supplies over, or some of these contracts over for a year, and it saves us money on this side, they could come back next year, we could figure out what to do from there. So I'm not unhappy what's there, I think I'd like to see some things moved to free up tax base.
Right, okay. I guess my initial, and then we get Director Roy's thoughts and everyone else's thoughts as well. I guess my only concern is, you know, moving things over even for just one year, if we're not going to be able to, to do that in the future. If we do want to move over one-time purchases that, you know, did meet the fund balance threshold, we just heard that there's, you know, a few million dollars to play with before we hit 8%, so that would also be an option.
It is, but again, next year, if the CMP corridor comes online fully, we'll have additional money, which would cover those one-time items being flipped back to where they belong. So there's money projected for the future that would cover that, should we make that move this year to lower the tax base.
Okay.
And I would like it least considered.
I understand. So you, you have a list that you'll be emailing Director Roy?
Yes, in the morning.
Okay, all right. Counselor Chinam, do you have concerns about any of the fund balance items?
No, I don't, but I do have a couple of questions, and I would appreciate it if Counselor Glant would send all, send that, his list to all of us. The 219,000 that we're not going to use to buy the land for the fire station, that, that is not restricted in any way, that can go anywhere at once.
That is leftover funds that we move from the premium, so that is not restricted. That is, is your decision to where you'd like to use it, and that's why I just put it in there, since it was for, approved for the fire land, I figured I'd put it under the fire vehicle, it does not need to stay there.
Okay.
It's just a request.
All right, thank you. And if we talked about this before, I apologize, but what's the 85,000 for the gym floor that has come from other sources?
So that is requested, hold on. So that is the, we're, I'm requesting that we use old, the interest from old bonds to remove that. So the 85 is coming from interest from our 2020 bond of 55,000, that is interest. 28,000 from our 2022 sold bonds, that was interest, and then to clean up the 2023 2,000.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Mayor, no, I have no concerns with any of the items that were presented tonight.
Understood, thank you. Counselor Sol, did you have any items of concern for this list of, from fund balance?
Yeah, well, I guess, I don't know, just to try to save some money, and I'm so sorry, the robot is one that I think we could probably put off for another year. Samar Park, the, I could have read it again, hold on.
Can we just quickly talk about the robot really quickly? So it seemed to me that your fellow counselors were in wide support of this robot. Counselor Glant seemed into action.
Well, they liked it, that's different.
Well, yes, counselors, you just want to chime in about the robot, to see if there's consensus to pull this. Counselor Chinam?
Well, Director, Assistant Associate Director Bates is going to be giving us the payback period on that, and it's, it sounded to me as though, oh, there she is, it sounded to me as though this is a, an item that is going to save us money. Now, whether it's going to start saving us this year, next year, or two years down the road, it sounded to me as though this is a wise investment and a fiscally prudent move. So, yes, it's bells and whistles, it's fancy, it's kind of exciting, and probably fun to watch, but if it's going to save us money in the long term, I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
I'm right there with you. Any concerns about the robot? Okay, well, we're going to keep the robot for now, Counselor Sol, but on to your next item.
It was the Samar, I think it says Gateway.
Which line item is this?
The Samar Payne, 32.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a big plan going forward for Samar Park now, Payne Park, don't we? Like a project to do landscaping and redo the whole park?
Director, or, do you want to take this?
Megan, if you could join me up here. So yes, City Engineer Bowley has been working with a consultant on the whole ribbon path from the, from the Auburn entrance across, and working in that area, in that southern area. I'll let Deputy Director Bates talk about what's...
So the area that we're talking about is across the, the road, across from Oxford, next to the restaurant that's there. And it just simply, it was created many years ago, and with many different species of plants, and it just got overgrown, very hard to maintain because of the closeness of, of the various plants. So they ended up just mowing it down, just to clean it up, before last year's Dempsey Challenge, I think is when we ended up doing that. So what we'd like to do is just start all over again, freshen it up, make it, make it a little bit more simple to maintain.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Chinam?
Is that, is that railroad company land, or is that the adjacent lot?
That's the adjacent lot. That's the gravel.
Right.
Parking area.
So, because I think the land behind the pizza restaurant is...
Lewiston House of Pizza.
Right.
Yep.
I think that's railroad property.
I believe so.
Okay. And this is the one that's further toward Main Street from that?
This is, no, this is actually between the Lewiston House of Pizza and the railroad restaurant. Station Grill.
Next to the station, it's the walkway.
So we have a nice curved walkway with some granite, and some old rails.
And some...
There were a lot of grasses planted there.
I see.
So that connects the Bates, Bates Mill area, near Da Vinci's and FX Marquardt, down into Samar Payne. And, and the landscaping that we're considering for the, the future design, Steve Murch, who is our arborist, has been deeply involved in the conversations, trying to maintain these type of, these plantings, and reduce our operating cost and maintenance. So this is to redo this space, so it's aesthetically pleasing, but we're able to maintain it.
Thank you, and I do want to continue to urge that the rails remain in place, and I think there's been no plan to remove those, the original tracks.
In?
Anywhere.
The section?
In Samar Payne Park, from, from the bridge, all the way to Lincoln Street, as far as they go.
Duly noted.
Yeah.
I think we do have plans, but we're, we're trying to maintain as much as we can.
I thought I read in the, was it the, the Riverfront Island Master Plan, that those were going to be accented as a historical concept, a historical piece in the, in the plan. So I just want to keep attention on the fact that those should not be ripped up.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. They're on the edge of the park, it's not like they're running right through the middle, that's impeding all kinds of stuff. I, I really love the look of it, and it just, you know, we can, we can update the park and still maintain the history of, of, you know, the immigration that came through there, and so on and so forth. Counselor Najin?
Everybody loves a tripping hazard. Can we continue along the way to...
Yeah, we're, we, we will definitely, I realize we started with Counselor Seven, but we will be making it to Counselor One here soon. Counselor Sol, did you have, and, and you're, you're at this point fine with the, the Gateway plans?
Sure.
Oh, you don't have to be, but I'm just asking.
I'm good.
Okay. Any other concerns then? Counselor Roy, did you have something?
Thank you. First off, I'm going to apologize at this point, but not all of us are in favor of a robot. I do see the savings in it, but I got to tell you, the taxes that everybody's going to be paying on all these things, I, it's our job to try to save the taxes from going up, correct? So at this point, I mean, we have a couple of line items here that, you know, for vehicles, I would like to see maybe one program ask for vehicles every year, so that way there we're not getting five, like, $2 million worth of vehicles, that's just my concern at this point. So, because again, I mean, if we could save, we'll say 1.5 million here, we could take something else and put it into here and save the tax, taxes from going up. That's my concern right now with this, because again, we've got the police officers asking for 500,000, and then we've got the municipal garage asking for 1.5 million, so 2 million here. If we could split that and take a million dollars from somewhere else to save on the tax rule, I'm all in favor of that. That's my biggest concern here. So for me, I'm trying not to raise taxes, and I'm inclined to probably vote a lot of things down this year. That's what I'm going to tell you. Because again, with the reevaluation and everything like that, a lot of people are afraid, with everything that's being cut in, in, right now, with governments and funding and all that stuff, a lot of people are scared, and I don't see that I can clearly vote to raise any taxes this year. So when I apologize to everybody right now, I'm going to be very lean this year, and I'm probably going to say no to a lot of things. That's all I'm going to say.
No, I appreciate your viewpoint. Just to reiterate, we're, we're talking about fund balance here, and so nothing here is going to affect the tax rate. I understood Counselor Glant's point, that we could possibly move some things over, and he will provide the director and the rest of us, please copy the rest of us, Counselor Glant. But, yeah, we're talking about funds that we already have.
And I understand that, but again, there were some valid points made, and I would like to see those and maybe save some people a lot of money, so, because not everybody has the money, so.
Understood. Is there anything specific that you'd like to talk about here right now, besides your concern about the robot?
I only brought that up because, anyways, I apologize, so, there you go.
No need to apologize, we're, we're glad you're here. I'm, I'm feeling good about most everything, Counselor Harriman?
Yeah, I like all of these items, I'd be fine with funding all of them.
Counselor Longchamp?
Yes, I think they're all great.
Can you just, yeah?
Talk a little louder?
Move it, yeah, there we go.
Yes, I think they're all good items. I would like to see if we could add in helmets for the police. I don't know how we would do that, but I do think every officer should have their own helmet. I know for my daughter, there was something that had happened, and she had to quickly grab the helmet, but it was like, she couldn't adjust it quick enough.
And that's what, when I was the police chief, that's when they talked about go-bags, I know they use some police lingo, but each cruiser has a, a larger vest that goes over the vest that you saw Sergeant Rosson wearing, and then also a helmet, and that's what they talked about, based on the size of the officer's head, it is difficult to adjust of.
She could not.
Right, so I, I'm sure that, Counselor, I mean, Officer Bergeron, yes, had a smaller head than, you know, myself or some of the other ones that were there. Yeah, but that's the goal.
I would agree with that assessment.
So I would like to see every officer have their own helmet.
I, I totally agree with that, but how are we going to fund that? We'd have to, you know, we'd have to have that discussion with the chief.
I just think that's so important, like, that's your head, you know?
I totally agree with that.
And if you can't really, I mean, your head's shaped a little different from the ones that were sitting here, and, you know, so, I'm just saying.
But God, you look fabulous, Administrator O'Malley.
You do, but, you know, I just think that, I've heard a lot of talk about the helmet, and I just think that for safety reasons and stuff.
And we could have a conversation, or I can have a conversation with the chief, and see what that cost is just for the helmets.
Yeah, and I should have asked that.
And you're talking helmets, not riot helmets.
That's right.
The ballistic helmets, I can speak to about that.
Yeah, thank you.
And there's the drug forfeiture, or, sorry, if I may, Counselor Longchamp, there's drug forfeiture money that could also be used for this, or...
That, that's what I used when I got those go-bags for each cruiser back, you know, several years ago, so that would be a possibility, but we also, I, I need to see what the cost is.
Like per helmet, okay.
Thank you.
Anything further, Counselor Longchamp, about the list? Counselor Najin?
Quickly, I would, I would agree with the helmet piece. Ultimately, if you're asking me if I have any issues with anything that's being proposed in, in the fund balance expenditures, not, not specifically and particularly, but because of the fact that we have not done the thuns up, thuns down on line items, and didn't create a parking garage, and I have no idea what the budget issues, or, excuse me, a parking lot for things that we can discuss later, and I have no idea, we haven't actually talked about the mechanics of how we're going to cover this budget at all, so I, I, I would say I don't approve any of it, until I understand what our floor is, how much money we can allocate to LCIP. I mean, the thing is, the piece here, just I think for, for, for the person at home, this money has already been collected from you through taxes. And so thi- this money is not new tax money, but what it is, is it's, it's, it is available revenue that we can use in different places in order to, to help this budget along. The budget is, is, is pretty thin, I think that what was put before us was, was pretty thin, but at the same time, too, I do have a concern about hitting a, I would love to hit a, a, a net revenue neutral budget this year. I know it's probably not possible, but I would like to do my very best to do it, based on the fact that, again, the reevaluate is going to hit people uncomfortably next year, for sure, no matter what. And, and as long as we're not cutting employees, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to accept cutting some of the, some of the programming in order to get to a more neutral budget piece. And so I just want to name that, because I think that the process this year, like, this is the first time that we've even talked about anything, we've, you know what I mean? Like, and so, you know... mean? Like, and so, you know, and I know that I'm supposed to email in a list of things I want to cut, right? That's not very transparent and it's not, it's not, it's, it's not a discussion that we're all in the same room. And so I just have a lot of challenges with the way that we structured this this year. And I just want to name that. So right now, I have no problem with anything that's listed here, but I would say cut it all until we know how we're going to make that budget work altogether.
Okay, so, yeah, let's, let's talk about process and structure right now. Counselor Longchamp, did you have something?
Not that you want me to say. Just kidding, no.
You would not believe what I hear on a daily basis, so I'm sure I can take it. Counselor Najin, I did not mean to cut you off, should you have something else to say?
No, I mean, basically, we have, I think we have to get to the point where we understand what numbers we're looking at, as far as what the floor is for the 8% fund balance, the 12%, you know, these pieces that, that we can kind of move around a little bit, like we, we, there's some play in these things. But we haven't had any discussion until this moment, you know, and so, you know, if I was supposed to bring a list of all the things I was going to cut today, I didn't do that.
No, this is not that meeting. Yeah, we, and we still have time for that. So let's recap a little bit, and there's a few things going on here, and Director Roy?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So if I make a mistake, please correct me. So we have the fund balance here, and like you said, Counselor Najin, we, this is money we already have, and so right now, this, all these projects, all these items, this is, gets us to 10%, right?
Gets us to 10%.
Yeah, yeah, so we're at 10%, and then we just heard earlier that if we want to whittle that down to, to 8%, that gives us about 3 million to play with. And then we have LCIP, and those numbers are, are here, and that's money that would be bonded. And what is the tax rate right now for the budget?
So, I was going to update you with what we have for an amount. After the school board came forth, of course, it has to be approved by the school board, has not done that till the 28th, along with all of our adjustments for the oil, for the phone card that's not being used, all the adjustments we've done. It brings us down to a tax rate of 3306, which is an increase of $1.29. So that's where we're at right now, and that is with adding that 60,000 that you guys requested for the nonprofit. So to get down to having no tax adjustment whatsoever, you'd have to decrease 2,980,000.
And it's very unlikely without cutting staff.
Correct.
Yeah. And in terms of discussion going forward, yes, the council took an earlier, you know, not a vote, but there was a consensus that we not add things to the parking lot, should we not all be in agreement as to what was on the parking lot. That was a choice by the council earlier, and then nothing precludes us from bringing up items at any time during general discussion. The idea to email items to Director Roy was to simply have the correct department head here at the time, so that way when we do have questions, we have a department head who is here and able to answer those questions. So, yes, I, I think, when's our next budget meeting? Do we have a little bit on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
And we have?
We have a half an hour before you have an executive session.
So, and, so that represents our first, like, let's say, general discussion?
Correct.
We'll have a half an hour on Tuesday, and then we'll have however long we want to spend here Thursday night, correct? Is that a budget meeting as well? Where's my schedule?
Correct, Thursday.
Yes. So, yeah, I mean, if there's concern, I realize we didn't do a thumbs up and thumbs down, but we all had a chance to weigh in on LCIP. I think we're, we're mostly fine unless someone wanted to bring up an item now where we could all get consensus on it. We did that for the, for the robot. Yeah, and then we will, I'm sorry, what, Counselor Najin?
No, we didn't.
I, I, we, I mean, we'll be happy to replay the tape. I was like, did anyone have concerns about the robot? And at that point, nobody else spoke up. I don't want to get into like an argument here. We're, we're all on the same page and working on this together. I would say, one second, Counselor Roy, we, we will get to you. I, I would say going forward, you know, and we don't, and no decisions have been made, so, you know, if you don't have a concern right now, but then you sleep on it and you have a concern about a fund balance item tomorrow, we can certainly talk about it again on Tuesday. I would say, you know, let Director know, let Director Roy know the topics and the departments that you have questions on or concerns about what will be funded, so she can have the appropriate department heads here. We can start general discussion on, on Tuesday, and then we will, you know, need to stop for an executive session, and, and then we will proceed to general discussion for the rest of the meetings until we hash everything out. Counselor Roy, and then Counselor Najin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After Counselor Najin explained what he did, after you just recapped, it seems to me, and Director Roy recapped, it seems to me like we need to cut 2.98 million dollars, correct? In order to be flat?
Flat.
If, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I think this is kind of what I said earlier, and kind of what Counselor Galant said earlier. If we take 2.98 million dollars out of this fund balance and we move from the LCIP into, like, we take that 2.98 million and we put it towards 2.98 million on this, we could be flat. Am I understanding that correctly?
If, if you choose to do that, I would just not recommend, like I said, using fund balance to offset your taxes, because next year, then you're going to have a shortfall of additional, because you have all the increases for salaries, benefits that are a given, there's, they're not going to go away unless you get rid of positions, along with the increases for any maintenance. So if you take 3 million to cover that, next year, you're going to need 6 million to cover. So I just, I, I just don't like using it, but ultimately, it is your decision as council. It's just my fear is next year, if we don't have that fund balance, then we're looking for 6 million.
Anything further, Director, or, I'm sorry, Counselor Roy?
I guess I'm just not understanding this. I mean, I think at this point, if we do it for one year, I don't think we're digging a hole. I mean, I would agree with Counselor Galant on this. I think that would, because again, we do have some TIF stuff coming down that could potentially ease that, so that's, I'm done with that. Thank you. Thank you, Director Roy.
Counselor Najin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we talk about any of these things, positions are not employees, right? So in some cases, we have positions that we funded, in some cases, for multiple years, without filling those positions, and that money always goes back into the fund balance, correct?
Correct.
And so, so I don't want to lose any employees. Now, as far as positions are concerned, that's possibly a different discussion, and I'm going to send you an email, kind of outlining what I'm hoping to see. But ultimately, we gave two raises outside of budget season because we had extra funds from our employee funds that we had budgeted for but never found employees for. It's sort of like when the, when, when the public school says we cut 91 positions, right? But they didn't cut 91 employees. And so what I would really like to see is that we, knowing that there will be funds that are dropping into the fund balance that are unexpended, I would like to run that as tight as we possibly can. And so I'm just kind of like painting that, that, that idea, but I'll, I'll send an email to kind of find out what positions haven't been filled. And I know that there are some positions that we have tried to fill that are very important for us to fill, that we just haven't found anybody for, but I also know that, that, that there's always seems to be extra money in the employee pool that gets dropped in the fund balance, so, you know, I, that, that is, my concern is that we're budgeting based on money that we currently have sitting as available revenue, we'll say, right, or fund balance, right? That's just in our bank account, and knowing that in June, the money that we didn't spend for this calendar year is just going to drop back into the fund balance. And so, that, that's that, that part that like, by approving a budget on May 2nd, but your calendar year doesn't start until July 1st, there's like that, you know, obviously, we want to cover the bases because we don't want to go broke, right? But at the same time too, there's, I think, a portion that we need to account for tighter, that's all.
So I, I do know that you received all the vacancies. Did you receive that email with, okay. So you are aware of the vacancies.
Anything further, Counselor Najin?
That's it.
Did someone have their hand up over here? Counselor Chidham, yes?
I've heard a couple of counselors say that the goal is zero increase in the tax rate, and I think that's short sighted. I think that if Lewiston looks at a 0% increase in the tax rate, it's already set itself back. We have so many challenges facing this city. We've got to realize that those challenges cost money, that I'm not looking for grand increases. I, I think that the administrator has done a marvelous job, and I was pleasantly surprised to hear that we're looking at $1.30, did you say?
$1.29.
$1.29, okay, well, $1.29, that's even better. It seems to me that if we are going to scrabble over $1.29, we might as well throw our hands up and say, goodbye Lewiston. We need to support this city, and doing that requires a commitment on all of our parts. So I'm not in favor of flat funding and holding a 0% tax increase. Everything in the world has gone up, and I realize that it puts stress on, financial stress on everybody, but we're going to kill this city if we don't adequately support it.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. I just wanted to chime in and just reiterate the point that if we use our fund balance towards our operating budget to try to keep the tax, the tax rate flat, then next year, we're going to have, as Counselor Roy, or, sorry, Director Roy alluded to, you know, we'll have this year's increase plus next year's increase to deal with. So I, I think it's just, it's a lot more predictable and a lot more, a lot easier for folks to, to plan for small increases every year than to, than to try to just, just flat fund something when we know we have cost increases, and then make it up in a, in a future year. It's just, you know, it's just taking money from your savings account basically to pay your, your monthly mortgage and your utilities. It's not sustainable. We could maybe get away with it for a year or so, but, but it's, it's not going to be something that can, that we can keep doing in the long term.
Anyone else would like to speak? Who hasn't?
Keep quiet.
Okay, thank you. Yes, back to you, Counselor Najin.
So just to say again, I'd like to try to keep it as close to possible as a neutral increase. I did not say that I want to make that happen, because I know it's probably not possible. I also think that we need to do our, as much cuts as, as we possibly can to be, to quote Council President Chidham, fiscally responsible, right? We're, we're charging ourselves a 2.8% interest rate on a loan that we gave the airport, but we're, we're saying that like everything that's on the, on the fund balance budget at the moment will approve as well as the LCIP. Well, I mean, we haven't said that yet, but I'm saying that we have to go through these pieces and decide where we can cut. And I agree 100% that I think the administrator and Director Roy have presented a very tight budget, a very small budget, but there are still things that we, that we should account for in order to try to reduce that impact as much as possible. And again, the reeval, while, and projects that are lurking that are not going to be finished this calendar year, but we should start to see revenues from next calendar year and definitely the year after, or fiscal year, excuse me, all come into play. I mean, they're all pieces that, that we need to be thinking about to be responsible for the constituents that we represent. And that's all I have to say about it for right now, and we'll have general discussion, I guess, for 30 minutes on Tuesday.
And, and for hours on end on days following that. Sorry, did you want to say something, Counselor? And then I'll chime in here.
I, I just want to reiterate my request out of courtesy to staff, that we allow the administrator to schedule departments on different workshops, so that we don't have everybody sitting here waiting on the off chance that we want to discuss an item. So if you could please all get questions you have on any item of the budget, whether it's LCIP, fund balance, or operating budget, get those into Director Roy, Administrator O'Malley, and as a courtesy to the rest of us, then we can give the administrator the task of saying, okay, this is what we're going to discuss on Thursday, next Tuesday, next Thursday, and so on. I think that'll make it an orderly process, and I would encourage you all to go home, look at all three of those components of the budget, and identify any questions that you have, concerns that you have, so that we can address them orderly.
Questions would be great, but you don't even need to do that. You could just say, these are the departments I'm going to have questions about, and we can have the department heads there. Yeah, I, I agree that, you know, for department heads to being able to plan would just be, would be great. The only thing is too, if you had some grand request that would require additional prep or something else, perhaps you could email that, so that way you could be ready. Yeah, and listen, we all, we're all talking to our constituents. We have our ear to the ground and, but we still need to make good decisions, and, you know, the only way we can get to a flat budget is either by moving a bunch of stuff into fund balance, or, or laying off staffs or, or programs. You know, there's no, you know, with step increases and inflation, it's just not, not possible this year. Yeah, and, you know, we need something, we need something that's sustainable and that makes good fiscal sense. That's my recommendation to the council. Further, further questions at this point for Director Roy? Counselor Roy?
Thank you. I don't have a question. I'm just going to say I'm not in favor of laying anybody off, but I am in favor of keeping seniors in their homes that have been there for, for 40, 50 years. That is where I'm coming with this. You know, I know we probably can't get it to zero, but what I'm saying is, is, you know, it's $1.29 over right now. If we can get it, and does that include, well, I do have one question, does that include the school part of the budget also?
Correct, if it's approved as they're going to present it on the 28th.
Okay. I would still like to see, yeah, some of this, God, I, if we can get it under a dollar, I'd be totally happy, but I, I just want to keep people in their homes. I, because again, people that don't have the ability to go out and get a second, third, or fourth job, I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence for them, so that's what I want. Thank you.
Counselors, we're mostly saying the same things at this point, but yes, Counselor Chidham?
Thank you, Counselor Roy, for bringing that up. I think we need to do a better job of letting our citizens, our residents and taxpayers know about all of the relief programs that are available to them. Counselor Galant compiled an excellent summary of programs that are available for veterans, and I do want to remind everybody that the taxpayer fairness program on the main state revenue is applicable whether you pay income tax or not. You can get a reduction, a credit actually, on your taxes for, on your, from the state for taxes that you are paying here for your residents. So I, I think we need to do a great job. Thank you to you, Counselor Roy. We need to do a better job of letting our residents know of the programs that are available to them through the state.
Yes, so we will have Administrator O'Malley is the budget workshop first, and then the executive session?
Yes, we'll start Tuesday at 6:00. We have a half an hour, then Thursday of next week. It's all general discussion. It's all up to you folks.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Galant?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Can we use that half hour to decide if we're going to do 80, 85, 90? The percentages are 10, 12. A productive time for 30 minutes would be setting our perimeters, so when we go forward, we'll know how much money we're playing with. we'd know how much money we're playing with.
Yeah, I, I guess my own, yeah, sorry, keep going.
You know, I just feel that, I hear from several counselors, we don't really know where our goal line is or where we have to step off. If we know we're going to shoot for 10%, and that's what we have, then we work within that. If we know it's going to be 8% or 9% or 11%, and the same thing on the other side, you know, if we know what we're going to do to move things forward, 80%, 85, 90, all those floating numbers, once established, makes it a lot easier to determine what, what we're going to spend or what we can't spend. Because technically, at 9%, that's $1.9 million more we could add to here, and if we could switch it over, we'll be much closer to zero. So, there's, there's a lot of stuff that is going to hinge on how we determine those percentages.
Yes, um, that conversation, yeah, could take longer than, than 30 minutes, I'm afraid. Uh, and, one quick question, uh, Counselor, or Director Roy. Uh, so what is the, um, I know it's $1.29, you said, right now?
Correct.
Uh, with everything we know at this point. So, what is that? What is that in terms of a percentage?
So, for the city, it's 4.72. Um, for the school, it's 2.04. For county, it's 13.5, which is a 4.06 percentage. So, on a taxpayer that is, their home is $75,000, they're going to see an additional $96.75 annually. For a house of $150,000, they'll see an additional $193.50 annually. Um, and for a house of $250,000, they'll see an additional $322.50 annually on their taxes.
Okay, so we're, we're under, you said 4.6%?
It is, for the total, 4.06%.
4.06%?
Correct.
We're, we're nearly at 4%?
For the, for the full.
Overall?
The city, we're 4.72%.
Right, okay. Uh, yeah, uh, we can certainly, I, I guess, set up arbitrary numbers. Um, my only concern with that is, is just that it's arbitrary. I guess I would really love to talk specifics if you have concerns, specific concerns about budget items, you know? Um, I know a lot of us said to, that we want to, uh, keep staff, but it may be about positions. Specific concerns about, about specific things, I, I think is a great place to start. Counselor Gallant?
I don't disagree, but you can't talk too much specifics in 30 minutes. So, either we find something we can do in 30 minutes, or come out of our, just forego doing anything budget on Tuesday nights, come at 6:30, save the half hour, and then start on Thursday, where we have enough time to, to battle through all this stuff.
That, that could be the best idea I've heard all night. So, Administrator O'Malley, could we, uh, skip the budget, uh, the 30 minutes on, uh, Tuesday if we so chose to?
You certainly could. The agenda's already gone out, but we could just start at 6:30, executive session.
Right, and then we would have a full, um, however long we wanted to stay.
I mean, if there was one item that you folks wanted to talk about, maybe we could do that in a half an hour? Um, I know-
I don't know that we could-
But it's up to you, what you want to do.
All right, Counselor Najin?
As far as, uh, Counselor Gallant's proposal was concerned, I, I mean, I was in support of it, but I, I would have given a thumbs up, but we don't do thumbs up and thumbs down anymore, so, um, the thing that, that, that I'm thinking about is, if we understand where we're porting everything, right? Like, so, at, at the end of the day, when you go to the supermarket, right? You know how much is in your bank account, and that dictates what you spend, right? So, that, that would be my, my argument for a framework around what we're looking at concerning what we'll budget. And, and honestly, do we have a document somewhere that, that names what is either contractually obligated for us to spend, or what is required by law for us to spend? So, basically, do we have, like, a list from this budget of what is discretionary versus not?
So, you, you mean, you want everything that's contractual?
Well, what I would like to see is, like, so if we don't lose any employees, right?
If we don't what, I'm sorry?
Don't, if we don't lose any employees, which we're not going to do, like, I, I think we're all in agreement that we're not going to cut employees, um, those expenses, and then the expenses that are absolutely obligatory, right? Versus what is discretionary? Because I think what we're talking about right now is maybe 4% or 5% of the budget that's, that's discretionary overall. Am I correct?
Um, there's a lot more than that.
Yes.
So, our, our maintenance contracts, all of that, the largest piece is, of course, salaries and benefits, and then the next is our, um, equipment and our software and our maintenance on our buildings, all of those, um, contracts that we have that are a certain cost. The other, uh, the other items, like supplies, office equipment, um, but then you're leaving everybody with, uh, no tools to do their, their work.
Nobody's saying that we're going to cut anything that's discretionary.
Oh, I know, I'm, I'm just saying that the most part of it is, is contractual, the largest part, and that's why we say, in order to get down, then you're looking at positions.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes. Well, what, what, one second. Did, did you want to finish, Counselor Najin?
I was just wanted to, uh, go off Counselor Najin's comment. I did, I just want to point out, if you remember, we're freezing, um, seven positions, so that is an actual body. So, we still have open positions, and we could freeze another six police officers, and we could probably freeze another eight or nine at Public Works, but of course, that's going to affect the, our ability to provide certain services to the, the community. So, when we say we aren't cutting anybody, we're actually cutting, you know, we're freezing positions that, you know, would be somebody, but we're choosing to freeze those, is what I presented to you. So, if you folks want to freeze all the positions that are unfilled right now, that would be your decision, but just realize there are repercussions to those types of decisions.
Counselor Najin, did you have anything else?
I don't think I'm communicating correctly right now, so I'm just going to leave it.
You're good.
We'll, we'll come back on Tuesday and start again.
All right, so, Counselors, uh, or, sorry, Counselor Sol, did you have something?
I just wanted to suggest, maybe we could all talk about the $1.8 million fence on, for 30 minutes on Tuesday, or Thursday, next Tuesday. It's the one item, 30 minutes, the fence, the, um, Franklin Field, is it Franklin Pastures? The fence? Am I-
Counselor, uh, yeah, one, one second. Did you have something to say about that, Counselor?
Yeah, that's, so that's in the LCIP ask from the schools, and they, um, they actually don't really want that item in there, this, at least this year. They were, they were a little puzzled that it, that it came up to, you know, the top of the priority list there. But there are other LCIP asks from the school department, but that-
Yeah, like the tennis courts.
Yes, tennis courts, um, space for increasing enrollments, um, but the, the fence, we can all basically ignore right now.
Oh, perfect.
I don't see the fence in here right now, do I?
On, on the school department, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, 470. Is it, you said 1.8 or?
Yeah, well, it's divided between the city and the school, so at one point, it was 1.8, so, it doesn't matter now.
Yeah.
Uh, well, is, is there consensus on that? Do you want to talk about school LCIP for, uh, for Tuesday? Can we get Jake here?
We can request that he be here Tuesday. I just don't know if he's in, in the office.
Right, or he can send, uh, Mr. Grant. Uh, all right, well, let's, let's plan on that. Let's talk about school LCIP, uh, for Tuesday. It sounds like not a bad idea, and then we will, um, talk about everything else, uh, on Thursday, and for however many days that will take. Anything further, Counselors? Are you good, Administrator O'Malley?
Yes, I am.
Director Roy? Can, can I get a, a thumbs up for those of us who want to adjourn? All right, have a great night, Lewiston. Thank you very much, and thank you, Counselors and staff.